Good evening. It's Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, and this is a regular meeting of the Montclair Zoning Board of Adjustment. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of municipal building and sending a copy to the Montclair Times, Star Ledger, and Herald News. And I should correct the record and note that this is actually a special meeting of the zoning board of adjustment.
Roll call. Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer is excused. Mr. Reynolds is absent at this time, but we are expecting him. Mr. Church?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Allen is excused. Mr. Affronti is excused. And Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Caulfield is excused. And Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Graham, you want to announce the adjournment?
Sure. Well, first, the approval of the minutes we're going to carry to the June 19th meeting of the board. And then, also in addition, Application 2612 for property at 83 Park Street, applicant Paul M. Rotunda, DMD. The applicant has submitted a request, correspondence dated today, to carry the application to our June 19th meeting. The application will be carried with no further notice.
So if you're here for that, you can go home and come back on June 19th?
Correct.
Okay. The first resolution is that for the TFK Property Management LLC, for the property on Grove Street, I don't have any changes to that resolution. Does anyone else have any changes? Someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? And we have the resolution for the Codino application on Summit Avenue. I don't have any changes to that resolution. Does anyone else have any changes?
No.
So I'll move the...
I move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? And we received the revised resolution for the Hacker Azar application for the property on Grove Street. I have one change, and then you can explain if anyone can vote on it. On page two, number five, the second sentence, it should say, "The lot is undersized along Grove Street." Anyone else with any changes to that resolution? So is anyone eligible to vote on it?
Mr. Church and Mr. Moore are the only eligible that is present.
So one of you has to move it, and one of you has to second it?
I'll move it.
I second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, abstain. Then we have the Barclay application on Walnut Street. On page one, number one, it says to permit a new five-unit multifamily dwelling in addition to the existing two-family dwelling on the parcel. And on the third line, on page three, if you can be beat after appropriate and consistent with residential density in the area, and then delete number nine. I don't want this to come back and bite us with more people coming in with projects that are denser than... This was denser than what the ordinance allows when you do units per acre. And I get nervous that someone might come and be say, "Look what you did here. We also should get many dwelling units." I think there are enough unique factors and enough justifications other than that. And all we need to do is find it's not a substantial impairment to the zone plan, not that it's insistent with it. Anyone else with any changes to that resolution? Someone want to move it with the changes?
I'll make the motion to move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have the resolution for Redeemer Church of Montclair on Willow Street. I don't have any changes. Does anyone else have any changes?
No.
So I'll move the resolution.
I'll move the resolution.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The first application is that of Karen Gale and Joshua Cohen for property at 11 Fidelity Place. This is an application for a variance to construct in addition to an existing dwelling. The property is in the R2 two-family zone. The property is designated on the township tax maps as Lot 30 and Block 3,901. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum front yard setback of interior lots of less than the required 25 feet. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Karen Gale, 11 Fidelity Place.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to tell us what you're proposing to do?
Basically, we have a... We are on a dead-end street. There's only six lots on the street. We're at the end of the dead-end. Our door opens directly into our living room, so there's no foyer or anything. So there's an existing cement landing, and we just want to enclose it and pour the coat in and change the steps so that it's a front step, so that when we go in, there's a bit of functionality before we get in. In the winter, we have two kids. It's just, as soon as we open the door, everything flies into the house. So we just want to enclose that little landing.
Any questions, members of the board? Mr. Church?
You're talking about exposing... Enclosing the open part on the top of that cement?
Correct.
And that's... How's that going to be enclosed with what?
It's with a window and wood.
And now, the Historical Preservation Commission's...
Yes.
And they're giving you some...
Yes. They've recommended some of the materials for us to use. And they asked that it be... Which we were going to do anyways, was to make the stairs in wood instead of what's in place right now, which is what we were going to do.
Any other questions? Ms. Harris?
Yes. Is there... Can you explain why you decided to change the orientation of the stairs to increase the... Well, you're decreasing the set...
Right now, as it is, we are... With the kids and everything, our driveway is there, and then we always go this way and in. And we just think, with the rest of the street as well, everybody has a front. I mean, I have pictures, if you want to see them. They're all...
Sure.
But they're all front-facing, and we're the only ones that kind of go side and in.
Why don't you come up here with the pictures first, if you could?
No, on the back shows which one is which.
Okay. So we have a series of...
That's going this way.
Okay. How many do you have altogether? Six. So we're just going to collectively mark the six photographs as A1, and I'm going to pass them along.
So right now, you're... When you come down your stairs, you're on your driveway? Is that how it works?
Exactly.
Was there a structure in front before?
Not that I know of. I know there was construction prior to when we purchased. I'm just not sure how...
The brick's always been exposed?
Yeah, it's always been there.
All right. And why would you like to have a screen? What particular...
Why would I like... Sorry?
Why would you like to have a screen? What particular reason?
Again, functionality, like right now, and the all-weather conditions, basically. We don't even... As soon as you open it, it's our living room is right there.
Okay.
So we have no foyer, and we have no hallway, and no barrier between outside and in. As soon as we go in, it's right there.
In addition, the Historical Commission also made recommendation about the windows. Do you have any objections to the recommendations about the windows?
Was that... That was a no, right?
No.
Okay.
No objection.
Members of the board, Mr. McCullough?
So there appears to be a walkway from the driveway across the existing front porch. Is that correct? Is that what I'm seeing?
Um...
I can't quite tell. The picture is rather dark, so it's hard to...
Do you mind if I... I'm not sure.
You can come up and see.
Oh, that's the sidewalk.
That is the sidewalk, so...
Yeah.
So in your driveway is where?
This is it.
That's your driveway.
Yeah. So we were just... And this is already a landing, or just basically the steps there.
So my question then is, with the orientation of the front porch being changed, with the stairs coming down to the front, will those stairs reach all the way to the sidewalk? Or...
There's still space there.
There's still space?
Yeah.
So you would anticipate that people would walk from the driveway, out the walkway, and then up the...
I would... Yeah.
There would be a new path up to those?
Exactly.
Other questions, members of the board? Graham, can you prod the Historic Preservation Commission to give some rationale for their reasons, rather than just simply saying they wanted to use double home windows in place of the proposed casement windows?
Uh huh.
And I have no... And then why the single window versus the double window? I have no idea. The historical basis... I mean, this is in a potential district. I mean, this house doesn't fit in with the neighboring houses in a way that, you know, it's having some rationale as to, you know, it would be more in keeping with the historic context of the neighborhood, or something, as to... I just... The practicality between the windows they're proposing and what they're recommending, I, you know, I don't know why historically it matters. But you're willing to go along with the conditions?
If it's necessary. My architect said that security-wise, she would prefer to do the single, but we could go with the double if it's a requirement.
Okay. Did your architect have any other comments on the recommendation?
She was... Again, she was willing to make any changes necessary if it needed to.
So I assume she preferred the casement windows, just because someone can climb in?
Exactly.
Anything further you want to say about the application? Are there any members of the public who have questions, comments, testimony, statement, anything whatsoever you want to say about the application? This is your chance to say it. Ms. Gale, anything you wish to add at this point before we discuss and vote on the application? We'll start discussion with Ms. Harris.
I actually think the stairs and the way it's currently oriented, from a convenience perspective, makes sense. You know, you come from your car, and you just go right up the stairs as opposed to going around and then up. And so I would say that, from a convenience standpoint, and for a functionality standpoint, I think the stairs should probably remain where they are now, you know, enclosed and rebuild them. But I think the orientation should remain where it is, and that way you keep the existing front yard setback. And it'd be a little bit easier to approve this variance.
Isn't the front yard setback a function of their covering?
Correct. The front yard setback is to the covered portion.
Oh, it's not stairs?
Uncovered stairs are allowed to project them to setbacks.
All right. Okay. Well, I don't have any objection to the covered porch at all.
Mr. Simon?
I'm in favor of the application. It seems like a reasonable improvement to the home.
Mr. Church?
Yeah, I would be in favor of the application also with the provision elicited by the Historical Preservation Commission, with the question of the windows that was raised by the chair to be answered as to why they asked. But the rest of the provisions by the HPC should be... I would approve it with those provisions. The casement window versus the double home. If there's a question about it, then that should be resolved with the HPC and...
Mr. Moore?
I'm in agreement with the application. I don't see this as a detriment to the community, and it'll also help to alleviate a bit of the hardship with coming out of your door, dealing with the weather, whether it's, you know, snow or anything else. So I agree. And also, as long as you can work with the Historic Preservation Commission with their recommendations, and just like my colleague, in regards to the windows, I'm in favor. You know, if there's a safety, it wants more safe than the other, but it's not necessarily going against the Historic Preservation Commission strongly. I agree.
Mr. McCullough?
I also support the application. I think that what's being proposed will enhance the utility as well as the look of the house. So I think it will add value. I think moving the stairs to the front will be consistent with the neighborhood, which I think is valuable. I do agree with my colleague that having this... Moving the stairs from the side where they have easy access to the driveway can be a bit awkward and can create exposure that perhaps, you know, may not be favorable at some point. But nonetheless, I certainly understand what you're seeking to do. So I'm certainly in favor of this proposal.
I'm in favor of the application. I mean, I'm going to... Either way, they need to cover the landing, and we're proposing to cover the landing, and that creates a variance. And I'll leave it to you to decide what you prefer as to where the stairs should face. As Mr. McCullough said, the other homes, then you said the stairs go straight out to the street. You know, I am torn on the Historic Preservation Commission. I, you know, I'm assuming they did want the double home windows because the other windows in the house are double hung, and that's what they're doing. But in terms of what their proper jurisdiction is, I'm not really sure that that necessarily relates to the potential historic character... Historic character of the potential district. And, you know, and I think there's a reality here of the street ends at the back of this very giant garage that, you know, basically is catty-cornered to your lot and is singularly unattractive. And then across Fidelity Place from you is the front of another large garage that... So in terms of appearances, there isn't much when you get to the end of the street to look at. So I'd say... So, you know, I don't think granting this variance will result in a substantial detriment to the public good. I think overall, enhance what that front entrance... Clearly, work was done there. I'm not sure what. And I think this will enhance the appearance of the house. That will not impair the purpose... purposes and intent of the zone plan. And I think we should do conditions one, three, four, and five, and not require you change the windows. I think, you know, and partially because of you're at the end of a dead-end street with not much facing you in terms of other residents going what's going on. You know, our house has a double hung window. You know, that's easy, and my wife thinks, "Why don't we lock the window every night?" And I say, "I'm not going to lock it every night," but I understand the issue. I ignore the issue with my house, but, you know, it's... We live on a regular street with lots of houses around where people might notice. But... So I recommend we approve it with conditions one, three, four, and five of the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation. Any further discussion, members of the board? Someone want to make a motion?
I move to approve the application, giving the comments by the chair.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Graham, if you could say, we'd be more willing to follow along if there was explanation as to why they want things?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next application is that of William Baggett for property at 5 Hollywood Avenue. This is an application for a variance to construct a new detached garage to the rear of the existing dwelling on the property. Property is in the R1 one-family zone district. Property is designated on the township tax maps as Lot 25 and Block 3,907. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-46A2A to permit a minimum side yard setback for accessory structures of less than the required six feet. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-46A3 to permit interim rear yard setback for accessory structures of less than the required six feet. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
William Baggett, 5 Hollywood Avenue.
Okay. You want to explain what you're doing and why?
Sure. So we have an existing garage that was damaged during a windstorm a few years ago. And the current garage is situated between the existing house, which has concrete steps in the back of it, and the rear property line. And so in rebuilding it, if we, you know, maintain the six foot, it brings it closer to our house, and the distance between the concrete steps in the garage gets reduced significantly, making access to the inside of the garage with the car difficult. And at the other side, I'm just looking to match that rear setback, which would reduce the difficulty of the approach off the driveway. And in the application, there's a property survey, kind of a close-up of the existing garage with the existing setbacks. And then on the third page, what I'm proposing. And on the fourth page, sort of a study I did of access with the vehicles. And on the fifth page, there's some photos of the current conditions.
Yes. What do you currently have right behind the existing garage? Are there trees? Is there a... Just straight exposure from the adjacent property behind you? What do you have?
So behind the garage, it splits the... Two separate properties behind me. And if you look at the survey on page two, you'll see that there's a vinyl fence kind of to the west, and then there's a wood fence more to the east. So right now, there's several feet to the wood fence, I'd say maybe eight feet. And you can see that condition a little bit in the figure four on the page with the photos. But basically, there's, you know, a fair amount of space. The property is on a grade, so it's a little steep back there. And there is an existing tree that you can see there, which I'm hoping to get removed because it's the very tree that caused the damage to the garage. This actually belongs to the neighbors in the rear.
On the survey, right next to the existing garage, they show a concrete wall. What is that exactly?
So that... There's a grade, and it gets steeper towards the rear of the garage. And if you look at figure four again on the photos, you'll kind of see that grade. And it's just a very small retaining wall.
Are you proposing to remove that as part of the new construction?
I think it would have to be removed, because I believe that a completely new foundation would be necessary.
So is there any reason why you can't move the garage to the west and maintain the existing side yard setback?
Uh...
If that wall is going to be removed?
I would prefer not to excavate further into the grade. And if you look at figure one on the photos, the garage is already set west of the driveway. And I'm trying to keep that as in line with the driveway as possible.
So the garage that exists today, is it or was it actually a functional garage?
At one point.
How long ago?
I've lived there for approximately three years. We do open it almost every day. We keep, you know, bicycles and lawn furniture in there. As you can see, it's in pretty poor shape.
So you haven't stored a vehicle inside that garage?
No.
And so your proposal is to have a garage where you're able to store two vehicles?
Correct.
Yeah, if you so choose.
Yes.
Other questions, members of the board? Other than the rear yard is currently two feet, six inches, is there any other reason you came up with two feet, six inches for your proposed side yard setback?
Not exactly. Figured if it was... If we were able to accommodate two foot six on the rear, then it's plausible that it would be accommodated on the side.
The... Do you know what the distance is between the front of the garage and the stairs at the back of the house?
It's approximately 17 feet. And then you can see in the survey, there's a concrete walkway on the side of the house, too, that sort of impinges into the driveway space a little bit.
So if you were able to replace the existing garage with a new garage with the same dimensions, would you be able to put two cars in there?
It would be... The door I'm proposing, the door with, is the same as what's existing. So they would theoretically fit, but you wouldn't have a lot of space to open the doors. And, you know, I'd like to have a little extra room to store bicycles.
So the little extra setback is... From your vantage point, gives you some elbow room?
Correct.
To be able to make the space more functional?
Correct.
And you're reluctant to do that on the west, because it would reduce the amount of footage for recreational space? Is that...
Well, it's easier to approach the garage with the cars to the east. Well, it's easier to approach the garage with the cars to the east, because that's where the driveway is.
Right.
Uh, so the way I sort of look at it is, I'm more or less keeping the garage door where it is, and I'm extending the inside dimension to allow room for car doors opening.
And the garage, your neighbor's garage on the other side, is that a functional garage?
Yes.
And they store vehicles and?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Why, I wasn't clear as to why you couldn't move the garage over on the lot, is there a, an incline?
There is.
To the left of the garage you're looking at?
Yes.
And you don't want to cut that down?
I prefer not to, just from a cost standpoint, but it would also mean that as you're approaching the garage with a car, you know, the further to the west it is, the more you have to sort of navigate where that concrete steps are.
Gotcha. Um, what type of material are you building with?
Uh, probably standard wooden frame.
Wood frame?
Yes, with, uh, you know, siding.
It was a picture of?
Yes. There's a very basic plan and elevation on the last page.
Other questions, members of the board? Let me give you my dilemma, so, I mean, I'm partially answered, but not all the way there. I mean, normally, we, for better or worse, get a lot of these detached garages that in one storm or another were damaged and need to be replaced, and
Understood.
Almost all of them were built within one or two setbacks, and, you know, what we've been fairly consistently doing is requiring that they keep, well, two things, and they keep a three-foot setback, and two, not let them encroach any closer, you know, this, so, the, and what, and actually, um, your figure four, that picture, shows what the issue is, um, you know, where, and the fence on that lot, I guess your survey shows is one and a half feet, or, on the, y to your rear is one and a half feet, so there's actually, you have one and a half feet more space between, but you can see the narrow space that's created, and why we want to try and widen that. Um, the, okay, now, to be somewhat more helpful, um, just so, I'm making sure I'm reading this correctly, your current garage is eighteen feet wide, and it's, and you're proposing it to be twenty-two feet wide, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, so, just going by the dimensions, you're, um, making it a little less than three feet closer to the property line, so, which means you're about a foot and a quarter moving it towards the concrete wall on the west side of the garage, correct?
Yes, it would go in both directions.
And that's what's dictating the removal of the concrete wall, that basically you're going to be on top of where it is now.
I don't even think there's an existing foundation, so there's.
Right, I, yeah, I, most of these old ones are just on a slab, and, um, the, okay, so, and you're making it a foot longer than it is now, and why are you doing that?
I, I think it's a fairly standard garage size, I think what's existing is very unusual, um, and if you look at the photos, you'll see that it started off as kind of a metal shed, with something built onto the front of it, uh, and it.
I mean, partially I'm asking that because one of your rationales for, um, encroaching on the side yard, my understanding is the difficulty of maneuvering between the garage and the concrete stairs, so if you move the garage, you've got both a cost issue because of the need to excavate, and you have a maneuvering issue getting past the stairs the further west you go with the garage, is that correct?
Yes. It's also wanting to maintain as much yard as possible.
Right, and, and you, I guess, you're kind of compounding that by making the garage a foot longer, it's giving you a foot less maneuvering space, and?
Uh, I kind of look at it the other way, I think by extending it deeper, you allow more maneuverability within the garage.
But, well, with two cars and twenty-two feet, there's not a lot you can do.
Sure.
Um, inside the garage, I mean, you, you don't have the full twenty-two feet, because you have, you know, you have to support the walls on either side, and?
Right.
Um, it's, um.
Yeah, I, I want the garage to be as functional as possible, and, and to me, that, that means making it as large as affordable without, you know, having to tear up the whole yard to excavate further, uh, you know, we do have children, um, I do want to be able to sort of walk around both cars, and like have room to store bicycles and other equipment.
But, I mean, you know, you're, in terms of parking spaces which are designed, allow that, I mean, the, what, it's nine by eighteen in the town ordinance, um, you know, and you're, you're effectively doing eleven, eleven by twenty-two, which is, you know, considerably larger than what I will call a normal required parking space. Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have questions, testimony, anything you want to say about the application? Okay, anything further you want to add before we discuss it and vote on the application?
What is the nine by eighteen?
That's the, in the town ordinance, that's a required size parking space.
Minimum size for parking space.
Which, you know, is designed to make sure there's maneuverability between, and I'm not pushing you to an eighteen by eighteen foot garage, don't panic there, um, but I just, you know, it's not, some reduction is not going to make it so, you know, doors are, you can't open doors, and you can't easily get in and out of cars. Well, start discussion, Mr. Simon.
Um, I generally am in favor of the application, but I think, you know, you're, you're already so close to that three-foot mark that we've kind of, um, used as our new standard, that I think, I don't know the exact design or dimensions of the garage that you're proposing, but, you know, for basically, you know, six inches or another foot, I think you can maintain three feet on the side. Would that be unreasonable to, to construct?
Would, would I be able to maintain the two-sixth on the rear?
No, for the side yard, to bring it up to the minimum of three feet, because especially since your argument was, was pretty arbitrary, just, you know, comfort and convenience about opening the doors, I think you can maintain the, the minimum of three feet for the side yard.
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with that, I'll basically take what I can get, to be honest, if you're talking about two-point-six versus three feet.
So, on, in that regard, I would generally be in favor. Mr. Church?
I would be in favor of the application with the proviso just mentioned, that the side yard setback be maintained, that means moving it over somewhat, to get that side yard setback at three feet.
Okay, so this is, just so I'm clear, this is the current five-point-three dimension?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Would I be in favor with that proviso?
Mr. Moore?
I'm in favor of the application, given the same sentiments as my colleagues.
Mr. McCulloch?
Uh, I'm also in favor of the application, I'm not so sure I would have as easily given up the half a foot, but, but.
I'm a rookie. Can I go back?
No, and, and just the reason is because, looking at what you're proposing, um, you know, it appears as though you don't have space for storage other than the garage itself.
Correct.
In, you know, and so that, so storage becomes a premium in terms of this facility, that's, that's the reason why I make that comment, but otherwise, I'm certainly in favor of what's being proposed.
Ms. Harris?
Um, I'm interested, um, the application, I actually think that probably change the setback, that's even more important to do with the garage, than with the current.
Um, yeah, I, um, also in favor, I, I'm kind of torn on the how to handle the side yard setback, I think, I think unlike a lot of situations where we've dealt with where the properties have been much deeper, there, there is a practical reality of maneuverability between the garage and the house, and, um, you know, he's all, he is already shifting the garage over by about one and a half feet to the west, you know, into the current rear yard, and I think, you know, this is, you know, this is not a wide lot, don't want to, when I don't know if it'd be practical, getting across the mouth how practical it'd be to move, shift the garage over, and I think limiting it, so, um, you know, I would be in favor with the requirement that this, that the rear yard maintain the two, two-point-six feet current, and the side yard keep a three-foot setback. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, add the application with the proviso mentioned.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Go, go and get in the garage.
Thank you very much.
The next application is that of Lauren and Martin Bristow for property at forty-six Llewellyn Road. This is an application for a variance to construct in addition to an existing detached garage to the rear of an existing dwelling. The property is in the R-0 Mountainside Zone, the property is designated on the Township Tax map, it's lot thirty-eight and block two thousand one hundred and one. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-34A2B to permit a minimum side yard setback for accessory structures on corner lots of less than the required fifty-five feet from the adjacent side street. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-104 to permit off-street parking area setback of less than required four feet. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes.
Would you both raise your right hands, you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
State your names and addresses.
Lauren Bristow, forty-six Llewellyn Road, Montclair.
Michael Debiase, I'm the architect for the project, Debiase and Seminero Architects.
Mr. Debiase, you're a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, want to explain what you're proposing to do?
Yes, the, um, the existing garage sits in the back of the house, and the driveway is off Llewellyn Road, so it, it gets to the, from Llewellyn to the, to the existing garage, which has the door spacing the backyard, you come by the house, and you have to have a big driveway to get all the way into the, into the garage, so like their backyard is basically a driveway. Um, it's a, it's a relatively large lot, so there is a way back where there, you know, where there is some grass and tree area, so, our idea was, rather than have all this infrastructure surface and driveway, you know, you don't want, you know, the, the sort of cars to park right near, in your backyard, was to use access from Curtis Terrace and create a smaller driveway, a little better shape for, for, uh, having a two-car garage, uh, you know, access out onto it, and, uh, then being able to afford all that backyard as a nice green backyard for it. Uh, so that was really the main concept of this whole design. Uh, the existing garage, uh, we also decided that we could actually add a little addition on it, so, just to give them more storage, and, uh, than they have right now, so that's really where the addition part came, come on, came on. The garage's the proper height for the zone, so we kept it within, uh, within the height restrictions, but we also tried to tie the, uh, the garage back to the original house, and this is really taken from one of the dormers of the main house, uh, and that's how that, uh, the three-dimensional design of the garage came about.
The driveway that is currently on Llewellyn is going to be closed or is maintained?
The, the existing driveway is going to be removed, it, when it, when it reaches the side of the house, so it's going to maintain the existing drive, but we, I think twenty-one feet, and then we stop it, and it's going to be removed from, from the back of the house, but this is going to be, we're going to keep this, this driveway, with the idea that this is more of that private road that comes back, where if guests came, they could, you know, park closer to the front door, so, you know, this is more of a family, I think, the parking garage, you go out the back door of the garage, and you have a shorter walk, uh, to the, to your back door of your house.
Now Curtis Road, you said is private street?
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's a right-of-way, a private road, from what I understand, but.
Okay.
So it's a right-of-way on this property?
Yes, half of it's on this property, and I think half of it's on the other.
On the other side of.
Yeah, the other, I think there's more.
So you, you have half that road?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, so it's a twenty-five foot wide road, and she has twelve and a half.
As part of the new entrance on Curtis, there's a tree there, are you removing that tree, and do you have plans to replace it?
If we remove the tree, we'll replace it, I mean, yeah, there's a big landscaping portion of the project too, and, you know, taking all the driveway away, and there's going to be, you know, new landscaping and a new, new buffer, and the fence also proposed as well.
And the additions to the existing garage, they don't encroche the existing setback at all, right?
Correct, yeah, the existing is, so what we did was kept the, we thought it was important to sort of keep that historic volume of what's there right now, uh, so the, so this is the existing line of the, of the existing garage, and then to make it wider, we pushed inside, that's that shaded area, inside the property, and then in the, in the back of the garage, which faces the house, we pushed out a little bit of storage for bikes and et cetera, but made sure we, we set it back, so this facade is the same dimension it is today.
So if I'm, if I'm viewing this in my mind correctly, the front entrance used by guests or family is on the side of the house?
No, no, the, the front entrance is directly, yeah, facing Llewellyn, right straight in the center of the house.
That's right, so when I looked at it, it looked like that was, okay, thank you.
So does this, sorry, just a minute, so does this proposal then allow for more vehicles to be parked on the property?
I don't think so.
No.
No.
Because although, I mean, on the.
I think it would be the opposite, actually, because the Llewellyn access point is shortening, and the Curtis access point is much smaller than what it is existing today.
Hmm, but, but the current, the current arrangement would require that vehicles would need to work their way all the way up to the garage, I mean, you could, you wouldn't leave a vehicle halfway in the driveway, I'm, because it would prevent access for other vehicles to get to the garage.
Correct.
Whereas, whereas the proposal allows for access, new access to the garage.
Yes, new, new access, but, but there is a widening of the driveway right directly behind the house, and there, you, there is the opportunity to leave vehicles and be able to get around that vehicle to the back, I think that was your question, as, as it exists now?
Well, just on the, on the basis of, of.
Well, just on the, on the basis of Z1, I mean, you, you show a vehicle that is, that is parked beside the house.
Right here.
Yes. And it's backed in obviously, so that would suggest that the intent is to, is to make this sort of a, a space where vehicles could permanently be parked, I mean normatively be parked, let me put it that way.
I think that, I guess they could be normally parked, but I think it was more for guest parking is what we thought, so that the owners would always use the garage in the back, in the, off of the Curtis Terrace. Although it was my understanding, speaking with the zoning officer, that if we maintain that front driveway, I think it was under their suggestion that we, we actually have an ability to park there. So that was driven, I think, really by the, by the zoning officer of Montclair.
I think the communication was that you can, it can be used as a parking space as long it's behind the, as long it's beside the house, not within the front yard. That's a permitted parking space, but it does trigger the variance release, which you have noticed for, which is that parking spaces need to be four feet off the property line. So it's going to be used as parking that's deficient on that side yard of the driveway.
So how long of a, how long of a walk is it currently from the garage to the house? I mean, if you're, if you're parking in the garage and you want to carry suitcases and groceries and, I mean, how convenient or inconvenient is that?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we're not parking in the garage at the moment. It's not, it's never housed a car in the five years we've lived there.
The garage itself, okay.
Correct, it's not.
So this will be making it functional, okay.
Pardon?
This would be making that garage actually functional?
Yes.
And it hasn't changed the walk to the, our new design really hasn't changed the walk from the garage to the main house. It's the same walk, yeah. I mean, maybe it changed it by, no, actually, the entrance is off the existing wall, so it's the exact same walk, yeah.
And so the family entrance to the house, on the basis of parking in the garage, going to the house, would be entering into?
At the back, there's a door in the back.
Is that like a, into kitchen area, family?
It's into the kitchen area, yes.
I just want to have a sense of what this flow feels like.
You've got a note on the drawing Z1. It says, remove portion of existing drive. And that's going to be replaced with what?
Grass.
Grass, yeah.
And then the favors that you show on coming down, that's the walkway from the garage to the.
Correct, those are like stepping stone kind of walkway through, through the grass.
Okay. So you're increasing the green area, correct?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're decreasing the impervious surface and increasing the green area, which I thought was a benefit for, for this approach.
Other questions, members of the board? I'm still having tremendous difficulties, but new difficulty then, but related. So let me, let me give the two of you a context for this and a suggestion. Your survey and the surveys of the homes on the west side of Curtis Terrace, all, none of them seem to include Curtis Terrace as part of the property, which leaves the interesting question as to what is Curtis Terrace? I mean, it's not a dedicated public road. And since you're now planning to use it as access to your property, I would spend some time with a lawyer to make sure things are established, oh, you have a right to use Curtis Terrace. That's not a condition, that's just a suggestion that, and does the town currently plow Curtis Terrace, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Okay, because that's another practical thing, now that you're parking your car back there, you probably are going to care about. And if the other Curtis Terrace houses are paying, they probably will want you to contribute. But my guess is the town does it, but probably find out before the first snowstorm.
Sure.
My question for the two of you is, how are we viewing Curtis Terrace in terms of being a road? We're just viewing it as not being a road? And it's, this is just a regular side yard interior lot?
Graham is going to go to the ordinance and refer to that.
I, I could tell you that when I did my calculations, I did not include the road.
Right, I see that on your plan.
I think that's ultimately going to be the correct interpretation.
So the definition of street in the ordinance is an accessway shown on the current municipal tax maps. An accessway is not defined as public or private, it just says accessway.
And so by the tax map simply saying Curtis Terrace private, that makes it an accessway? I mean, I, it clearly serves as an accessway to the Curtis Terrace lots on the west side.
And that was the staff?
Yes.
So street is defined as an accessway shown on the current municipal tax maps.
So.
So staff interpreted it as a, as a corner property because it is two streets.
So the garage is then in the front yard?
Correct. So for, and that's why in my memo, I cited, yes, A2B, 347-34A2B, the applicant requests a variance per minimum, minimum side yard setback for accessory structures on corner lots of less than the required 55 feet for the yard adjacent to the side street.
The same side yard?
Well, it's for the, it's technically the front yard adjacent to the side street. So from the side street, accessory structures are required to be setback 55 feet from the side street. In this instance, in the orientation of this property, Llewellyn Road is the front street and Curtis Terrace is the side street. The narrower frontage determines the true front of a corner property. So the yard along Curtis Terrace is a side street, front yard.
But normally we call that a front yard.
Yeah, but for purposes of the defined setback. So accessory structures are permitted in the rear yard, but must be 55 feet from the side street yard. This is an existing accessory structure, so the additions to that are violating the provision set forth in this instance. So I guess, and it could be, you could also consider it a variance from 347-22, which is location of accessory structures, where accessory structures are permitted in the rear yard only.
Well, that's my, I want to give them the correct variances. And I think they, we have this prohibition on accessory structures in front yards, and I don't know how you view this as anything, if it were, once we're considering Curtis Terrace an accessway and hence a street in our normal parlance, this is in that front yard. Okay, so they, and without going, so I think we need to grant a, a variance for the accessory structure in the front yard.
So that's 347-22.
Different ordinance provision and add that to.
I'll just confirm the subsection.
Oh, it's just there.
It's 347-22A.
Any other questions from members of the board? Oh, one other question. The, the survey shows a small portion of the driveway encroaches on the neighbor's yard. That's to remain, okay. We're, obviously, our variance is not approving that. We're only approving you going up to your property line because we have no authority to let you go on your neighbor's property. I, my second suggestion to you, I would suggest resolving that little issue so you don't end up with a cranky neighbor at some point in time who says, get off of my property. Any other questions from members of the board?
I do, was there an engineering report for this application?
There was not, this is not in an area of steep slopes, there's no engineering plan required.
Are any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have questions, testimony, statements? Anything you want to say about the application? Anything further either of you wish to add about the application?
No.
Start discussion with Mr. Church.
I would be in favor of the application, not really understanding the discussion we just had.
I can give a five-minute discourse of explaining if you want, when I get my turn, but probably no one else wants to hear that.
Yeah, okay. I would approve the application. I also happen to live on a private street. And I don't have the same problem because it's just a bigger street. I would, you have access to Curtis Terrace now, right through a gate on the property, a walkway gate?
Yeah, you're side, from the side yard.
Yeah, the side.
So you, you use Curtis Terrace now, is, okay. I'd have no problem with this. There's plenty of space on the property for what they're proposing. I'm just, have another question about the driveway existing. That, to me, is like having somebody parked in the front of your house all the time. I don't know if that's allowed, have a driveway, driveway to nowhere. I mean, we always, I, I used to think that having a driveway had to go somewhere.
I'm just, sorry to jump in. That's why the applicant has retained that portion of the driveway that extends beyond into the side, onto the side of the house. That can be permitted as a parking space.
Oh, this red line, okay, all right, okay, I see what you're saying, okay. I'd approve of the application.
Mr. Moore?
I'm in favor of the application. I don't see it being a detriment to, or a hardship to the community in which it resides. While also, I, I think that it would actually bring more value to your home since you're renovating your existing garage and even bringing more greenery to the front yard. So I think it would add value, which is important. So I'm in favor.
Mr. McCout?
I'm in favor.
Ms. Harris?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Simon?
Yeah, I'm back here.
Just make sure you hadn't snuck away or something. Mr. Church was hiding you. I'm also in favor of the application. I think the proposed removal of what is a very extensive driveway at the rear of the house is going to be an overall benefit, both to the neighbors and as well as to the property owner. They're keeping enough driveway behind the house so a car can park lawfully behind the front line of the house. The existing garage is already in, but is technically a front yard and the small additions to it are not changing the reality of what's there. It is fairly well effectively screened from the houses across Curtis Terrace by the existing vegetation. So I, you know, I, I mean, normally I'd be appalled at a accessory structure in the front yard. I mean, just the reality that this is a private road, that the few homes on Curtis Terrace are the only people ever going to drive by and see this, and it's sufficiently narrow, that it is, people are not going to, you know, people are not going to park on it, it's just not, it's too get to your driveway and that's it, both for you and the people on the other side. Unfortunately chose to inspect this when they were having an open house on Curtis Terrace on Sunday, which made the parking, looking at it even more interesting. And then a Amazon Prime truck came up behind to make a delivery out of the houses and, so. But, you know, I, I think, you know, what I would suggest since it, I, I think probably a couple trees will end up being removed, that those trees be replaced somewhere on the property.
Absolutely.
How and where, I'll leave entirely up to you. Any other discussion? Someone want to make a motion?
Do we need to grant the variance for the?
Oh, yeah, and the, the variance would be both from the side yard and rear yard, and having the accessory structure in the front yard. So it's both a setback and a permission to locate the garage, the accessory structure in the front yard.
Motion to approve the application with the two variances as just stated.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next application is that of Manuel Rosario, owner of property located at 10 Mountain Avenue, West Orange. This is an application for an addition, to construct in addition and renovate an existing dwelling. Portions of the property are located in both Montclair and West Orange townships. Property is designated on the Montclair tax maps as block 103 and block 1. And the property in Montclair is located in the R1 zoning district. The property is designated in the township of West Orange. Tax maps is block 149.01, lot 30.01. Variants is requested from the following sections of the Montclair Code. Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum front yard setback for interior lots of less than the required average front yard setback of the four nearest principal structures. Montclair Code Section 347-45C4 to permit a maximum permitted building width greater than 65% of the width of a lot frontage. Montclair Code Section 347-46C to permit off-street parking in the front yard between the main building and the curve of the street on which the building fronts. Our taxes paid and it's a notice and order?
Yes.
Your appearance, Counselor?
John Bottal, the attorney of our firm, Gary Graham Murphy, our founder and client, on behalf of the applicant.
Do you have any opening statement?
Yeah, just briefly, okay. To the members of the board council, this is an application by my client, Mr. Rosario, for the renovation in addition to an existing suburban home. It's a bit of a unique application because the property is actually partially in Montclair and partially in West Orange. As a result of that, Mr. Rosario actually began his application in West Orange because it's a West Orange address, Mount Neb in, in West Orange. And that was actually last summer. During the course of that application, he was advised that since part of the property is also located in Montclair, he would need to come before this board as well. There's actually a statute that allows two municipalities who have this condition to work out an agreement amongst themselves as to which towns ordinances would apply. My understanding is that no such agreement has been entered into between Montclair and West Orange. So we're therefore making applications to both zoning boards. And I just wanted to let the board know that because this has kind of made this a little bit of a difficult application for us because we're trying to make two towns happy and your zoning ordinances don't match up 100%. So this has kind of been a little bit of a juggling act. But the application in West Orange is pending and it's been on hold so that we could get Montclair's input and/or resolution if you look carefully. And then we can go back to West Orange and deal with them again. So that's kind of the backdrop, I just wanted to let the board know. Just for the board's sake, I have three, four witnesses, Mr. Rosario, the applicant. I have an architect, an engineer, and a planner. I appreciate the board hearing this. I know this is a special meeting, I know you guys are busy. I'll try to move this over as much as I can. Without anything further, I'd like to call the first witness, Mr. Rosario.
Would you raise your right hand to swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address.
Manuel Joseph Rosario, 14 Mountain.
Manuel Joseph Rosario, 14 Mountain Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey.
Mr. Rosario, are you the owner and applicant of this property?
Yes, I am.
And when did you purchase the property?
I purchased the property in November of 2017.
And what was your purpose in purchasing the property?
Well, my family's growing and we didn't have enough room where we were living in Belleville, so it was time for me to move. And I wanted to find a nice area to live in, quiet. We found this place in West Orange and we decided, you know, to renovate it because it was sitting for a couple of years, mold all over the house. That house was falling apart. We found this property and we decided that we wanted to move here.
So you purchased the property and your intent is to renovate it so that you can use it as your own personal residence?
That's correct.
And you heard my opening to the board, you have already started proceedings with regards to West Orange in order to get approval to do what you're planning to do?
Yes, I already had a permit to do the demolition on the property. And we put in applications for a zoning hearing. I also put in permit applications for tree removal because there were a lot of trees falling. And I was granted all of the permits and we begun the process. And then when we got to the West Orange zoning board, they informed us that we needed to go to Montclair and deal with the situation here.
Okay. And you heard me tell the board that application is still pending in West Orange, subject to what happens here?
That's correct. And they've been very gracious in holding it over for quite a while.
And the application that you took before West Orange, has the, have the plans changed since that original plan that you submitted to West Orange?
Oh, significantly. The coverage has changed. The variances, pretty much almost the same, but the language has changed. We've eliminated a pool. We've brought the house back significantly. And we've kind of changed the layout of the yard so that the surrounding neighbors would, you know, have some privacy.
And you beat me to my next question. The reason, what was the reason for doing all those changes from what you had originally proposed in West Orange?
Well, I'm going to live here and I'd like to have happy neighbors. So I'll do whatever I can to keep peace. I know after taking the trees down, there was a little bit of, some unsettled feelings with regards to that. So I went out and hired a landscaper to bring something into the area that would make, make it look a little bit more beautiful and be shrub resistant to the deers because we have a deer issue over there. And, you know, so I'm doing what I can to make people happy.
Okay. And as part of that, did you in fact try to schedule or have a schedule, a meeting with at least some of the neighbors to try and go over some of their concerns?
Yes, we did. We sat down with Mr. Tremulak and the neighbor on the north side of me, the Dennings, had a very nice discussion about, you know, what their concerns were with regards to drainage and the pool and the view of the property being sold forward, at least on the front side of Undercliffe. It's a very unique terrain, the way the houses are set up there. So the front of their house is actually at the back of my house. So it kind of lends itself to being visible to a lot of different things. So that was one of the reasons we decided to scale the house back, to give them a little bit more, I guess in the way of privacy, if you would want to state it that way? Or give us some more privacy?
And specifically with regards to the trees? Because I know at least one of the comments made by the township engineer had to do with tree removal. That was done based on a permit that was issued by West Orange, correct?
It was. And West Orange actually required us to put some trees back. They did call me up and they were wondering what was going on. I had mentioned to them, I'm in the process of trying to get through Montclair zoning and as soon as it's done, we'll be more than happy to put back what the request was for. The trees that came down, I'm sure you all understand, there's some sort of fungus or virus going on within the reservation there. It's killing a lot of the trees. A lot of the trees that are in that area are dying. Asphallos come out and cut down a lot of the trees. The power lines are going down. The Verizon communications are going down. As well, when I first bought the property, one of the trees fell on the neighbor's yard and busted his fence up. And the foreclosure company came out and fixed it before I purchased it. Another neighbor had an arborist come out to take a look at what was being done. And even the arborist said that these are what's called weed trees, that the roots don't grow down, they grow out. So when you're on a hill and you have gravity, they, the wind sort of takes them down. So the trees that were there weren't native to the area that we live in.
Okay. And are there any other trees that are being planned to be removed from the site?
No, there are no more. There's one side tree and it's like a, I guess if you want to call it a Japanese tree between my house and my brother's house, that's staying.
And you mentioned your brother, your brother is the neighbor?
Yeah, by the grace of God, the house went up next door and he bought the house next door.
So you're done with removing trees from the property?
Yes.
And your plan is to replace them as per whatever was required by West Orange?
By the town and by what we have on our landscaping detail.
At this time, I have no more questions for Mr. Rosario. If the board has any questions?
So have you currently spoken with an arborist? You had mentioned that you had removed a number of trees. I'm just looking at the report that our, that our engineer had put together and talks about how steep the topography is in the back. And so for the trees that were removed, do you have any plans to put them back possibly?
Yes.
For, you know, like erosion?
Oh, absolutely. There's an extensive plan because with the steep slope, when we removed some of the sediment from the house for the foundation, we were planning on putting a four-foot retaining wall in the back and backfilling that to take away that steep slope along with seepage pits. As well, the township of West Orange, he actually had us put trees in front of that wall so that it would be a barrier between us and the neighbor because the wall actually has to be four feet off the property line. So within that four feet, we were going to put trees along the east side and the north side. On the south side, that's my brother's property and there's trees there already.
What about the possible privacy?
Well, there's a fence. First you have the four-foot wall and then there'll be a four-foot fence. So the guy on the east side of me, he's going to be, he's pretty much going to be shielded from my property because you've got an eight-foot height there. On the north side, they already have a six-foot fence. But once you put the four-foot wall and the four-foot fence, we should be shielded from them, at least partially, because the slope does go up at a certain point. So it goes up right about where their house starts. That's where the slope goes up.
Is this, which property is it? Is this to the rear? What about the rear?
The rear is going to have the eight-foot retaining wall, or sorry, four-foot retaining wall, four-foot fence, which will give you a four-foot, you know, sort of like, if you want to call it a barrier. And then in between that, there'll be bushes and trees and floral and plants.
Have you been able to propose what these new trees would look like there, anything like that?
We actually, as part of the West Orange application, there was a landscape plan submitted. We have a copy of it. Yeah, why don't we do that? The architect tried to update the landscape detail that we submitted to West Orange because the plan has changed since we submitted it to West Orange.
Okay.
So it looks a little bit different. So he tried to update that landscape plan. It hasn't been submitted to this board or to the West Orange board.
Witnesses, correct?
Yes.
So why don't we just wait till that happens and...
Okay.
Just a quick question. You said, "West Orange required you to put trees back."
Mm-hmm.
Were these, the trees that you took in, were you permitted? Did you have the permit to take those down in the first place?
Yes.
And then what, they reviewed theirs and said there was too many? I mean, what caused them to say, "We gave you permits for too many trees to be removed"?
Well, the trees in their diameter, they were small. There were a few big ones. Couple of them were dying. The township, I'm not sure what department that is, Department of Public Works, he came out and looked at them and saw that they really weren't native to the land, that some of them were dying, some of them were falling. And he kind of agreed that they did need to go, but he did make the recommendation on the permit that I needed to replace them. And that's why after like a year went by, he called me up. He says, "When do you plan on putting them back?" I said, "As soon as I can start construction. Right now, I'm kind of on hold and, you know, I can't even live in the place."
Okay, so they pointed it out right from the beginning that it had to be replaced?
Yeah.
So the record is, you never received the permit from Montclair for removal of the trees, just from West Orange, correct?
Yeah, never knew I needed one.
And do you have the West Orange, I'm just trying to not be as consistent as possible with anything we do as to, in terms of what they required in terms of tree replacement?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have that permit here or...?
I have a, I have a cop, I have my copy of the permit. If the board wants to take a look at it, I have no problem.
I just, you know, at some point, we're, and we'll hear from the architect on the, you know, what he's proposing with the landscaping, but, you know, I, you know, not necessarily to be bound by their permit, but I want to get a sense of what's already being required so I can see how that fits in with any condition we impose.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, my copy.
Okay, so I'm assuming at some point that we're not going to finish in the next half hour or so and we'll take a break at some point and then Mr. Pedo can make a copy of that so we can have it as an exhibit. Any other questions from members of the board? Mr. Tremulak, do you have questions? And if you, just so we can keep track of who's doing what, if you could indicate who you're representing?
Absolutely. For the record, Alan Tremulak, attorney of Montclair. I am representing Kevin and Ann Denning, who live at 130... I should know by now. Kevin and Ann Denning live at 137 Undercliffe Road, which is directly adjacent to this property. It's Undercliffe Road, Montclair. It's an unusual position for me to be in. I can't remember the last time I appeared as representing objectors. But this is sort of close to home for me also. The Dennings are friends and neighbors. I live at 147 Eagle Rock West, which I'm not within the 200-foot list, but my property is directly down the hill on the slope from this property. So I also have a personal interest in addition to representing Mr. and Mrs. Denning. I just have a few questions for Mr. Rosario. Mr. Rosario, do you know the size, in terms of square footage, of the existing house?
I believe it was a little over 1,000.
1,000 square feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Could be wrong, but it's close to that.
Okay. And do you know the square footage of the house that being, the expanded house, that you're seeking approval for? Total square footage?
It should be on the drawings, okay? And I can't give you that information.
Okay.
But we do have that information.
According to the architect's drawings, your first and second floor total 3,670 square feet, does that sound correct?
Without looking at it in full view and having the numbers in front of me, it's hard to kind of give you an answer.
And there's an additional level that's shown on the plans. It's characterized as a cellar or recreation area, which is an additional 1,700, I'm sorry, 1,972 feet.
There is a basement level in that.
So that would be a total, if my math is correct, of a house having 5,642 square feet compared to the current house, which is 1,000 square feet. Is that right?
That could be correct.
Okay. Now, you testified regarding the trees that you recently removed and you've already indicated in response to Mr. Harrison's question that you obtained a permit from West Orange, but you didn't obtain a permit from Montclair.
That is correct.
Okay. And isn't it correct, by the way, that the majority of your property is in the town of Montclair?
I can't say because I am not an engineer to determine whether or not, if the majority is in Montclair or West Orange. I do know, however, that I'm governed by West Orange and I pay taxes to West Orange. And when I went to get the permit, they gave me the permit.
Okay. And you didn't think you needed a permit from Montclair?
Not at all.
Isn't it correct that most of the trees that were removed? By the way, do you know how many trees were actually removed?
Eight.
Eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is it correct that those eight, you essentially clearcutted the rear yard? Is that right? You removed all the trees?
Not all, there's one left.
Okay, so eight out of nine. And a number of those trees were located in the town of Montclair, right?
No, I would say 50/50.
Have you... Have you done anything to correct or remedy the fact that you didn't seek, obtain any tree removal permit from Montclair?
I'm in the process right now.
Do you know Montclair requires a tree restoration plan to be submitted if you applied for permits?
Again, I'm unfamiliar with the way Montclair does things because I'm a West Orange resident and I went to West Orange believing I was doing the right thing. I'm not trying to skirt any laws or do anything back channel. I thought West Orange was the way to go. Thank you.
Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? And this is just, we're not represented by Mr. Tremulak. And this is just an opportunity to ask questions, not give statements. And it's only questions for this witness. The architect engineer will be testifying. And so if you have specific questions about the plans, they will undoubtedly be the better witnesses to answer those questions.
Yeah, I'm looking for, my name is William Jones. I'm on, I guess it's the east side.
Could you just, okay, just give us your name again, please?
My name is William Jones.
And Mr. Jones, where do you live?
So I live in Nine Brier Hill Road.
Do you have a question of this witness?
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify something. So we're talking about the trees being removed from 10 Mountain Avenue, which I guess could conceivably create a drainage problem and certainly a privacy issue, which Mr. Rosario has said he's going to, you know, address, you know, and I take him at that word. But I don't know when the trees could be put in because he, or someone has also purchased 14 Mountain Avenue, which is exclusively in West Orange. But in order to do the work at 10 Mountain Avenue, I believe you got access through 14. So you're not going to be putting up trees, I assume, until the work is done at 10. So I've lost the privacy at 10 Mountain Avenue, plus...
You have to ask him a question.
Yeah, okay, plus, plus, well, I'll ask a question, but you, let me present the issue first because I've lost the privacy.
Isn't the question when, when he anticipates replacing the trees?
Well, okay, are we going to do the, your plan for replacing the trees in Montclair would also apply to West Orange? This might not be the typical venue, but I've lost complete privacy on the side yard. So that's the question.
In all honesty, I feel for this man. I think he has a valid, you know, he has a valid concern. I really want to get this done and started and completed as soon as possible. Unfortunately, I find myself in a very precarious situation here where I got to go to West Orange and Montclair to get the same approval. And I'm fighting the good fight here, trying to make everybody happy. So as soon as I can get started, I get it done.
That's my questions, question for now, okay?
Thank you. Any other members of the audience with questions?
Why did you take the trees down?
Okay, well, half of them were dying, half of them were falling.
How many were dying?
I would probably say about three or four.
Wait, so you don't know?
Wait, hold it. Let him answer the question, okay?
I'm gonna.
Okay. Half of them were dying, half of them were falling, and they were becoming a problem because you really couldn't see what was going on back there. It was like a jungle. And this property's been sitting for a number of years with brush growing and nobody taking care of it. So when I came in, the first thing I needed to do was clear out all the brush to see where we were at. Like I said, when I bought the property, there had already been a tree that fell on Mr. Rosario's property and destroyed his fence. So I didn't take him down with malice, I took him down with... So I didn't take him down with malice, I took him down with understanding what I needed to work with.
Wait, so how many trees?
There was eight taken down.
So eight were taken down, four because they were dead?
Yeah, they were dying or dead.
Oh, okay. Do you have that information?
On me at hand, no.
Well, who can?
You could go to the West Orange Township if you wanna go there and talk to the guy who, you know, did the inspection.
So I have to take you at your word right now?
No, you don't have to take me at my word. I'm just giving you what I know.
So that's in writing? Yes or no?
He has it in writing.
Okay. Did you consult, how many neighbors did you consult about this?
One.
One. So you took down, what you're saying, are eight trees, and you consulted one neighbor?
Yes.
Do you consider that neighborly?
Uh, well, considering I only knew one neighbor at the time, I did reach out to other neighbors, and I let them know that I was moving in, I was gonna be doing work there, that I had to clear out the yard. I gave everybody my business card, so I did the best that I thought I could.
I didn't get your business card?
I don't know, you don't live near me.
I do, I live 100 feet.
Well, I'm considering the people who are on my left, on my right, and directly behind me.
Well, later on this evening, I'll pass around a photograph of how close I live to you.
Just ask him questions.
I'm doing my best to ask questions.
We don't need a preview of your testimony.
Thank you. So have we met?
No.
We have not met. Okay, do you have any idea what the view looked like beforehand at my house, and what the view looks like now at my house?
I don't know where you live, sir.
Eleven Brier Hill.
I've never been to Eleven Brier Hill, so I don't know what it looks like.
Okay, so the answer is no?
No.
Okay, do you have, do you care what it looks like?
Counselor Coon, what kind of question is that? I mean, I've been very silent, and I understand the neighbors have a lot to say, but...
Well, I'll answer that question. I care.
Can we at least keep it factual instead of opinion?
If you lived in that house, would you not ask that same question?
Okay. He's willing to answer the question, so let him answer it, and you, we don't need...
I would imagine if you looked at the house that's there now that I own, would you wanna live in that?
Wait, so you're not answering the question. Did you look at your house before you took down the trees, and then look at your house after you took down the trees, from my perspective?
It's hard to do that when I, at the time, I didn't know where you lived.
So the answer is no?
The answer is no.
The answer is no. Okay. How big was the biggest tree that you took down?
In width or in height?
In width.
In width, I think the biggest one was...
Oh, you do have a list?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Was...
But just, just so the record is clear, my client is referring to the permit that I referred to.
Yeah.
This is not a...
Right, and that permit's gonna be marked into evidence at some point?
Yes. Yeah, I had to get a list together of all the diameters in the trees, and I marked everything out, and I took them to West Orange, and he came out and looked at every single tree, and he approved it. And I thought I was doing the right thing. But answering your question, the biggest diameter width was 24 inches.
And do you know how tall those were?
I'm gonna guess the biggest one was probably anywhere from 40 to 50 feet above grade.
Uh, which grade?
Depending on where it was sitting, and which tree you're talking about. Cause there's a, it's a sloped hill, so... On average, most of them were about 12 to 16 inches in diameter.
So those are small trees?
Yeah.
24 inches is a small tree.
That's not what the witness said.
He said they were mostly small trees.
He said there were mostly 12 to 16 inches in diameter.
Yeah, the majority of the trees that were there were mostly 12 to 16 inches in diameter.
Why are there no neighboring topographies on your plan?
Good question. I don't know the answer to that. I didn't know they were needed. You would probably have to speak to the civil engineer about that one.
Okay, I'll speak to him in a minute. You mentioned that you wanna get along with your neighbors?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think not talking to your neighbors before cutting your trees down is getting along with your neighbors?
I did talk to my neighbor.
Neighbor?
Yeah.
One?
I spoke to one. I spoke to Ann when I first met her about clearing the area out.
So the answer is yes? You feel like that's being a respectful neighbor?
I spoke to the lady who passed away next to me. She knew. So I spoke to a couple of people.
You still haven't answered the question, I mean...
Are you asking me if I think it's neighborly?
Yeah.
I'm telling you, yes, I do think it's neighborly.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other members of the audience who have questions for this witness? One, just, I have one question, just, Mr. Rosario, when you bought the property, did you survey none?
Uh, I did by Charlie Wheeling.
Okay.
The architect I have now.
Okay, and didn't that, didn't that show the, that the property was split between two municipalities?
It did, and I came down, I spoke to Rich Sharoon, because I thought there might be some question with regards to how I had to deal with Montclair on permitting, if I needed to build anything. And he said the general consensus is that we usually write a waiver letter because we don't like to get involved in other township's business. I said, "Okay," and that's the impression I was under. And then when I got to the West Orange zoning board, a number of residents showed up and made some statements the next day to Mr. Sharoon about not giving me the waiver. So this is why we started the process to come here and try and amicably deal with the zoning board and the residents to put something up that's desirable, that's definitely needed, to clean up what's there now. Again, in no malice or any way, shape, or form was I trying to skirt Montclair. I just didn't know that I had to deal with Montclair at such a, an in-depth process.
I want to call your next witness.
Okay, I just asked him one follow-up question, just on some of the questions. Mr. Rosario, now that you're aware of the fact that there are other requirements needed from the township of Montclair, specifically with regards to tree remediation, do you have any problem with complying with the tree remediation?
No.
That's all.
I'll call your next witness.
Yeah, I'd like to call the engineer, Sean McClellan.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Sean McClellan, spelled M-C-C-L-E-L-L-A-N, 101 West Street, Hillsdale, New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, do you need me to qualify the witness?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan, could you give the board your educational background and professional qualification?
Sure, I graduated from NGIT in 1997 with a bachelor's science in civil engineering. I've been a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey since 2004. I've testified at many boards, mostly in zoning and planning boards, mostly in Bergen County, but a few in Morris, Essex, and Passaic as well as a licensed engineer.
Will the board accept him as an engineer? Mr. McClellan, did you prepare a site plan for this property?
I did.
Okay, and can you just tell the board in general about the, about the property itself?
Sure, it's in the R1 zone, almost, a little short of 9,000 square feet, 8,183 square feet. It's non-conforming in lot width. We have 60.28, or 100 feet is required. The front yard, the way it works in Montclair, is 25 feet, or the average of the homes, two on each side. So we're non-conforming on the front yard at 27.9 feet, where the average is 50.1 feet. Also, on the side yard, well, 10 feet and 6 feet for the two required side yards, we're non-conforming on the one side yard at 7.3, where 10 is required. On the other one, we have 6.9, which is more than 6 feet. Another non-conformity is the width of the existing building. It only can be 65% of the lot width, and it currently is 72.9%. And finally, as far as parking goes, the existing dwelling has, was considered zero parking spots, and one of the things we'll be improving is we'll be making that number. We'll have one spot, so we'll be improving that existing non-conformity.
Now, could you also, as part of your preparing these plans, did you look at the drainage issues with regards to this property?
I did.
Okay, and could you tell us, with regards to existing drainage, how that works?
Sure, so the current property has no, no current drain, drain system. So any drop of water, whether it falls on the grass, the driveway, the walk, or the roof, just, you know, it funnels down the property, mostly to the property to our rear, with no type of measures to control it. And also, it's very steep, so the water travels very fast.
And as part of this application, what is being proposed with regards to addressing the drainage issues?
Sure, so even though we're only, we're increasing the impervious coverage of about 1,300 square feet, we plan on containing approximately 2,700 square feet of that water into seepage pits. So any drop of water that lands on the roof, or lands on the driveway, or that front walk, will be stored in two 1,000-gallon seepage pits. And we've designed those in a way with the amount of gravel we have around those seepage pits to be able to hold more than 6,000 gallons of water.
And based on that proposal, as a professional engineer, will the current drainage be improved?
It will.
And to what extent?
Well, so right now, the current house, all the water that falls on it, it goes on roof leaders, and then it just goes down the slope, right, right to the rear of the property. Also, if you look on the plan where we show the proposed addition, is, is a grass area that's very steep, and the water that falls on that steep slope and runs to the rear of the property will now be caught on the roof of that addition, and it'll go from, to the leaders, to the seepage pits. So it'll be a vast difference in the drainage once all the improvements are complete.
Did you review a copy of the May 29, 2019 report from the township's engineer?
I did.
Okay, and I know one of the comments he addresses is with regards to the submission of drainage calculations. Do you have any issue with that?
No, we'll submit the drainage calculations in, for his approval, and I'm sure he'll see that it will be vastly decreasing the amount of runoff that comes off this property.
And you have any issues complying with whatever is required in terms of drainage?
No issues at all.
Going through the report, he also has a question with regards to, and this is his comment on page three, number L, or letter L. He wanted to know whether or not, he just wanted confirmation of whether or not there are any waterways, wetlands, or springs on site at this property. Are you aware of any?
I am not aware of any.
And under his comment C on page three of his report, he indicates that he talks about the stabilizing the fill with the retaining walls, and he has a comment that in the event field revisions require a proposed retaining wall exceed four feet in height. Applicants engineers shall submit wall stability calculations prepared by licensed professional engineer. Do you have any issue with that?
No, we always try and keep our walls below feet, four feet for this reason, but if for some reason we definitely had to go above four feet, then we would submit the calculations.
And then in that same comment, he says upon completion of construction, the engineer shall provide certification of the wall's construction in conformance with submitted details and stability calculations. Do you have any issue with that?
No, we can provide that.
Page four of his report, comments D through J, a number of them, the comments are that the applicant will comply with the New Jersey standards for soil erosion and sediment control under the jurisdiction of the Hudson, Essex, Passaic Soil Conservation District. Do you have any issue with that?
No, we will submit a plan to them for their approval.
And that was actually one of his other comments, was that a plan be submitted and that it be certified correct?
Correct.
And no issue with that? He also has a comment that all building code requirements with regards to the structural retaining walls need to be met. Obviously, there's no issue with that.
No, we will comply.
And it says applicant shall, well, his comment with regards to minimizing the number and extent of excavations to prevent groundwater discharge to surfaces, and his comment is that the applicant shall minimize proposed soil movement activities and construct the proposed improvements in conformance with the plan. Do you have any issue with that?
No, we'll comply with that.
Moving on to his...
Let's just stay with that, Mr. Bedakla, and so on page four of the May 29 report from the board engineer, items D through J, applicant is indicating he will comply with those, correct?
Yeah, the only one, actually, I skipped over is with regards to the trees. It says protect all existing trees.
Which letter are we talking about?
Uh, that's I. Aplicants shall protect all existing trees to remain and limit the extent of soil disturbance. I don't know that Mr. McClellan can address that.
I'm not familiar with what, I guess most of the trees are not, no longer there, but whatever ones are there, we will protect with the, with the tree fence to make sure they don't get any further harm.
So that's the line, comment, whether you're gonna comply, if you're indicating you don't comply with D through J, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
How about yes?
Yes, yes. My only hesitancy was with regards to the tree, but he clarified that, and we have no problem with that.
You were continuing then?
Yes, so then his last comments are what he labels additional technical comments. You've already, you've already addressed getting the certification from the Soil Conservation District. He asks that a silt fence be installed down gradient of all disturbed areas in conformance with the detail on the plan.
Yep.
No issue with that?
We show it to go along the entire property.
Okay, and that will be maintained for the duration of construction?
It will.
And I'm gonna skip over number three, and I'm gonna go to number four. He's asking for a permeability test in the area of the seepage pits?
Yeah, we've actually had that done, and I will submit him the results when I submit the drainage calculations. But the soil there is very conducive to percolation.
And then going back to number three, the comment states the applicant shall ensure that stormwater runoff does not negatively affect neighboring properties. How is that gonna be addressed?
Well, I think I testified how that was gonna, the volume of runoff that comes off this property is gonna be, is going to be reduced, so it'll have a more, there won't be any negative effect by the increased building coverage because we're capturing all the water and storing it in seepage pits.
And then his final comment in that same number three is any damage is caused by an increase in runoff or improper drainage shall be repaired by the applicant. I have a question regarding that comment because I'm not quite sure what the scope of that assurance that he's looking for is. I don't know if that means during construction, until the drainage is in place, but certainly, I don't think that the applicant can be held in perpetuity to guarantee that he will repair any alleged damage that might occur from a neighboring property owner going on into the future. So that's my only concern with regards to that comment. I just wanted some clarification.
Okay, before we discuss that at some point...
Okay. And, Mr. McClellan, as part of your preparing the site plan, did you also do calculations? And, Mr. McCallum, as part of your preparing the site plan, did you also do calculations with regards to the grading and elevations?
Yes.
All right. So, can you just explain again to the board about the grading that exists at the site and what we're dealing with in terms of the conditions, topographic conditions on the property?
Sure. So, as I mentioned, it's going from Mountain Avenue to the rear, it's severely sloped. We kind of, the architect will probably talk a little bit more how we designed the building to fit in with the topography. However, what I can testify to is we tried to eliminate that slope. Here, we have a lawn area.
Can you speak into the mic?
Sure. We clearly lay a lawn area just towards the rear of the property of the deck that's, you know, fairly flat, slopes slightly, take away some of that slope to reduce how fast the runoff comes off the property. And then, we have two steps there, and it steps down to another lawn area. And we have, you know, at the maximum height, four-foot retaining walls around the rear. And that lawn area is gently sloped too towards the rear. So, we were able to step the property down, avoid, you know, the waters coming, screaming off these slopes, and, you know, nice gentle sloped grass areas, lawn areas with the use of these retaining walls. Also, do you have a question with regard to the height?
Yes.
As far as the height, we're allowed, we were allowed, I believe, 30, 35 feet. We're at 31.2. And the way we calculate that is as follows. We have to take a measurement or a grade at every 10 feet around the entire building foundation. And we can't just use any grades. What we have to do is we have to use, we use the existing grade if we're filling in an area. If we're cutting an area, we use the proposed grade. So, we're using the lowest grade at each of those 10 points, and then we take an average. And that average came to be 119.3, and we had a roof peak of, I believe, 150.5, and that gave us our building height of 31.2.
And was that calculation done in accordance with the code requirement?
Yes, it was.
Was your calculation in regards to the feet, was that taken from, I guess, from like the cellar that's in the, on the first level and kind of looking at it from the backyard? It's a little bit lower?
It goes every 10 feet around the entire perimeter of the foundation.
So, you didn't consider that's what I'm talking about?
Sure. So, where our proposed terrace is, for example, at that corner, let's say the back left corner, where my 10-foot mark ended up, the existing grade was 115.4. The proposed grade was 112.2, so I used the 112.2 for that portion of the building, for example. And then, as you come around the building where our proposed terrace is, the proposed grade is 114, and the terrace is at 109. So, I use the 109 for the calculation. And then, we just continue around the building every 10 feet. I look at both grades, existing and proposed, and use the one that's the worst-case scenario.
It looks like it'd be a little bit higher than that 35 feet, but I'll reserve my comment at the moment.
Other questions from members of the board?
So, I want to understand your stormwater testimony. So, when you're saying there'll be no increase in runoff, let's start off with what year storm was that designed for?
Well, when I do the calculations that the engineer requests, I often do it based on the parameters that he wants me to use. The way the code read is that there should be no increase in runoff on the property and no increase in velocity off the property. So, typically, it's done for 110 and two-year storm. I'm not sure exactly what the parameters is, you want me to use, whatever they are, I will use them, and drainage system will be, if the 6,000 gallons we show now is not enough based on Montclair's parameters, then we'll increase that storage. But I believe that the two seepage pits is going to be more than enough storage to handle the runoff from the driveway and the proposed home, and also to decrease the runoff off the site.
Okay. Okay. So, your decision to have these two seepage pits as proposed is what you believe to be enough to meet the storm, both, control both the rate and volume of runoff, but you have not actually done the calculations yet?
That is correct.
Okay. And what you indicated, you had done the soil borings and perk tests. What was the perk rate?
It was a K3 soil, I believe is two inches to six inches in an hour. Wait, no, two inches to six inches. Actually, I don't have it front of me. I might have logs, but I believe it was a K3 soil. Let's see if I have it here. I believe the K3 is two to six inches an hour is the percolation rate.
Okay. But you didn't do a perk test, you just classified the soils based on its composition, and given what the soil's category is, you, that you did the typical perk rate for that type soil?
Right. We had a company do it, do the testing.
I didn't expect you. But did they do a perk test, or they just categorized?
No, they did. They told us the permeability of the soil, the type of soil is K3, and the K3 has a certain permeability.
Okay. But they didn't put water in and actually measure the rate it went down? They just said we have K3 soils, and that's two to six inches?
Yeah, I don't believe they did a perk test. Sometimes, when we go on sites, we do it that way, but most times, it's sent to the lab. If someone's in a hurry and they can't wait for the lab, we tend to do it that way, but not very often.
But they sent it to the lab, and the lab came back with it?
Correct.
K3. The, okay, so, your plans are not showing any change in the grading, if I'm reading them correctly, on the east side of the retaining wall. Is that correct?
Yes. The wall's going to sit on the natural grade there, and up four feet at the highest point to the lawn.
Last area will not be regraded, don't be disturbed, because you have to put the seepage pits in that area, but the grade will be returned to its natural grade?
No, on the house side of the wall...
No, on the east side of the wall.
Right. That'll be the natural grade, correct. But the seepage pits are on the other side of the wall, where we are doing some grading.
Oh, I'm confused.
The seepage pits? So, between the wall and the property line here, that'll be the natural grade.
Right.
And we have a four-foot wall, and there were seepage pits.
Okay. I was talking about the, I'll call the wavy line above that.
Oh, that's steps from this lawn area down to another lawn area, correct.
Okay. So, those are just two steps there?
Right.
Okay. You, no, your attorney had some hesitancy on condition, or comment three on the engineer's report, which I understand, but will the stormwater system require any maintenance to keep functioning properly over time?
It always suggests that they be cleaned on a yearly basis or after a severe storm. If they ever get done, I don't know, but they should be inspected.
Okay. Because the, where, on one level, I understand the applicant's attorney's concern with not wanting to be bound forever in the future, but on the other hand, I don't want a situation where, you know, I think there's a significant risk that the system will silt over over time and not function as designed, and there will be an increase in runoff onto the adjacent properties that I'm trying to avoid that. And at the moment, we'll leave it at, unless you have thoughts as to how to avoid that, let your attorney think over the next period of time tonight as to what would be a way to properly protect the neighboring property owners and, well, you know, not, we have a giant rainstorm that exceeds the stormwater calculation, and flooding occurs, because that's what happens when...
Right.
You get six inches of rain in an hour or something, that there's nothing that could have been done to avoid that.
Sure. So, there's always cases like that, but, no, we are going to have more storage, there's no storage now, so we're going to have, you know, 6,000 gallons of storage currently. I believe that number three, it says any damage is caused by an increase in runoff or improper drainage shall be repaired by the applicant. I believe when he sees our calculations and agrees with them and signs off on them, that at that point, that we are officially reducing the increase in runoff.
I suspect your attorney is concerned about the improper drainage wording that we...
Sure.
The increase in runoff, I mean, there are two issues, is one, it needs to be designed so there will not be in accordance to the storms that are required by the engineer, and two, that the system be maintained properly so it continues to function at that level.
And, Ms. Chairman, we would have, I made my comment, and I'll clarify a little bit. I don't think my client, and I'll speak with him, but I don't think he has a problem with some type of condition where he says he has to do periodic maintenance to the system in order so that it doesn't fail or do what it's supposed to do. It's just, the way the comment was worded, I thought was just very, very broad.
I understand the concern, and I hope you understand our concern.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I think that's the way to address it, is to perhaps position on it with regards to some type of periodic maintenance so that the system does not get overwhelmed or it's, you know, issues don't arise because of lack of maintenance.
Any other questions from members of the board? Mr. Tremblak, do you have any questions, watching Mr. Petrie whisper in your ear?
Good evening.
A few questions.
Sure.
Have you seen the report from the planning department with respect to this application? In particular, the planning considerations noted at the bottom of page four. Your plan shows building coverage at 25%, correct?
That is correct.
Which is the maximum permitted in the R1 zone, right?
Correct.
All right. And did you recalculate the building coverage to include the terrace as was requested by Mr. Pedo, who wrote this memo?
Right. So, with the terrace and the terrace steps, it'd be about 29, 29.5%.
But that's an additional variance, right?
According, yes. So, the reason we don't have it listed as a variance is the definition of building coverage is building under all roofs and decks and staircases. It didn't include terraces. So, it was of our opinion that terrace was not included in the building coverage.
Right. But if terrace is supposed to be included, it would, the coverage would be 29.5 feet, 29.5%, which is 40.5% in excess of the maximum permitted.
Approximately.
Okay. And wouldn't that be a significant variance, given the slope of this property and the fact that we're already dealing with a lot that's, you know, undersized?
I don't know if I'd call it significant, especially since we are collecting more storm or runoff than we're required to.
Okay. I'm not going to review that with you at this time. All right. You provided the details of the height calculation, which was the third comment in Mr. Pedo's memo. Do you have your calculations available?
I have a sheet with, I did it on. Nothing on the plan, though.
And you, based upon your calculations, what did you indicate the mean grade, what the mean elevation was?
119.3.
And that's what's shown on your, the plan that you submitted and supported this application, correct?
Correct.
You're showing average grade. This is towards the top, right against the average grade, 119.3.
Yes.
And that plan is dated March 1, 2018, right?
Correct.
And there's no revision dates on that, right?
There's not.
Okay. Did you also prepare the site plan, the engineering drawing that was submitted to West Orange?
I did.
Okay. Do you have a copy of that with you?
Uh...
Want me to show you my copy?
I think I have that one. Same date, right? Two revisions?
All right. What I'd like to do at this time before I break, and mark this as O1?
We can. And exactly what are we marking as O1?
This is the site plan for this property that was submitted to the West Orange zoning board in connection with the application that's pending in West Orange.
And it's got a date of March 1, 18, and did I understand that it also has two revision dates? What's the most recent revision date?
I have 7/26/18.
Mr. Tremblak, is that the same one we just marked into evidence?
Yes. Seven, last revision date...
7/26/18.
7/26/18, correct.
Do you have other copies that you can provide to the board?
I only have the one.
You only have...
I think I needed it, West Orange site plan.
Okay. So, the West Orange plan has revision dates that are later than the plan that was submitted to this board, correct?
That is right, correct.
So, this basic plan was revised between March 1, the date of the plan that this board has, and July 26th, correct?
Right.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong, the plan submitted to West Orange with the later revision date, more recent than the plan that this board has, was the average grade at 116.8, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, wouldn't that be the correct average grade, since this plan was done, was revised four or five months later than the plan originally done in March?
No, no.
No?
So, it is my mistake that when I did the plan, site plan for Montclair, I didn't change the date. So, yes. But the reason that the height in West Orange is different is because at that time, the house extended farther back towards the rear of the property, which the slope was much lower. So, that's why the average grade is different than... So that's why the average grade is different than the average grade we had.
Okay. We'll come back to that, I'm sure. On the Montclair plan, curious, you have the zoning chart shown, which includes a reference to the required building height. Now I've got my plans all confused. And I'm just curious, because you show in the required column, building height requirement is 35 feet, 2 and 1/2 stories. And then the next two columns where you show the existing and the proposed, you show the feet, but you don't show the stories, in terms of the existing house and the proposed house. Is there a reason why you left off that information?
Uh, no reason, no.
All right. What is the number of stories that are proposed?
I'll defer that to the architect.
Okay, you did not determine that?
I believe it's 2 and 1/2 stories, but I don't want to...
Okay. We'll ask the architect then. One last question regarding the seepage pits, which you're installing in the rear of your yard. Isn't it a fact that those seepage pits, in order to function properly, need periodic maintenance and clean to remove debris, silt, and other things that might accumulate?
We recommend that every year after any type of large storm, yes.
Okay. And isn't the most common way to deal with that is with a vacuum truck that would go and remove any sediment debris from the pits?
That would be ideal, but there's other ways you can do it.
Yes, how would you get a truck to the location of the seepage pits, given where they are in the rear of the property with the retaining wall surrounding it?
We wouldn't be able to use a truck in this instance.
What would you have to use?
Some kind of manual vac or...
With respect to the steep slope submissions, one of the requirements is that you provide existing and proposed topographic plans utilizing two-foot contours, two-foot contours for the subject lot and 50 feet beyond the property lines. Does your plan show topo contours beyond, 50 feet beyond the property lines?
No, just on our property.
Okay. So that was not complied with?
That's correct.
Even though the board engineer seemed to indicate that there was compliance, but that information is lacking. Wouldn't you consider that important, given the proximity of the neighbors?
Which was the engineer's comment on that?
The engineer's comment? He said in his report that the site plan complies with that requirement, but you indicated that you didn't provide topo for 50 feet beyond the property lines.
This is item C on the May 29 report, page two.
Yeah, I'm not sure why he says it complies. Maybe he feels it's unnecessary and knows that we'd have to go 50 feet on neighboring properties to get that information. But no, our plan may be a few feet on each way, the way the contours were generated, but certainly not 50 feet.
All right. Would you be able to, able and willing to provide that information, since it seems to be a requirement of the ordinance?
If I can get permission from every neighbor to go on the property, I will.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the audience who have questions?
Mr. Chairman, can I just follow up one question before the...
Sure.
Before the residents started? So I just wanted to follow up with regards to the confusion regarding the plan dates between West Orange and Montclair. The plans that were submitted to West Orange, the structure, the addition to the house, is not what's being proposed here, correct?
They went much further back towards the rear of the property, where it even got steeper, so the grades were lower.
And that affected the height calculations?
Correct, because you go every 10 feet, so there were more, there were more numbers and there were lower numbers as well.
Oh, thank you.
So the plan submitted to Montclair should have had a later revision date, is that what we're saying?
There's no revision date in Montclair, but I probably should have dated it differently than I did.
Well, you dated it March 1, and that preceded the West Orange plan, so you're saying there was...
It was the same date I had in the West Orange plan, so basically, when I started doing the site plan for Montclair, when we decided we had to come here before we went to West Orange, I used the same template and didn't change the date to a more current date.
Okay. I'm going to, because I now have a bunch of questions on that, because I am thoroughly confused, because the plans clearly show different things, and I think we need to establish what plans are being approved and not have a situation where we're approving one set and West Orange...
There's only one plan that was submitted.
Well, you just said, okay, we're going to do it for residents, and then I will question you. Mr. Jones.
William Jones again, Nine Bridle Road to the east. Could you give me a little bit more information on item three? Any damages caused by an increase in runoff shall be repaired by the applicant? And discuss this a little bit. I would tell you right now, there is more runoff than before. I guess that's because the trees have been cut down, but I think, I don't, for me, that hasn't been resolved for me, so I would like to hear a little bit more about what that means. I understand, does it go on forever? But where we're at right now, this doesn't really tell me anything. And I have different areas of concrete and slate stone adjacent to that property, which if they get exposed to a lot of, you know, runoff, they're going to deteriorate. So I've got real questions about that.
Sure, so...
Any other different, you know, any other information that you could...
Sure, so right now, when it rains and the water falls on the roof, it goes down the roof leaders and goes down this steep slope right through your property.
Yes, it really does.
So when we put this addition on, not only is the existing house, but the proposed addition, is going to catch all the water. And all that water is going to be, is going to go down roof leaders, just like before, but instead of just running on the grass and going down the slope towards your property, it's going to go into the seepage pits, where the seepage pits holds it and slowly percolates into the ground.
That sounds good. If the system fails, you know, at the three-year mark, then what redress would I have? Or what would I do? I can't come back to the zoning board.
Well, I don't anticipate it to fail, and it seems like the board has, and has been raised as a concern of how these things are maintained, and I would be happy to, in my, for approval from the engineer, in my calculations, do a maintenance plan. And that would include, you know, making sure the gutters are clean on a certain timeframe, as well as the seepage pits clean on a yearly basis, to avoid anything that would happen that would make the system fail.
Okay. One other question. I just want to know, the four-foot retaining wall, what is that going to be, cinder block, railroad ties?
It's a keystone block wall, is what we're proposing. It's those interlocking blocks you probably see everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
I have it detailed in the plan.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, just as I come outside and morning patio, so it's going to be something that has some aesthetics, and there'll be some shrubbery there. Just give me a little bit more information.
I think the blocks look nice, much more than a concrete wall, a rock wall, but that's just an opinion, but as I think is going to be testifying later, there's going to be landscaping in front of those walls.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Other members of the audience with questions for this witness? Okay. I am thoroughly confused on the West Orange versus Montclair plans. You testified that the West Orange plan showed the house going further back and hence a different height calculation on those plans from the Montclair plans. So clearly, the plans are different. And are, which is the plans that is what the applicant is proposing to build?
It's the one you have in front of you.
Okay, and what are you going to do about revising the plans that are before West Orange?
If we were to get approval here, we would take this plan or this plan with any changes that the board would like to see, and that would be submitted to West Orange. We have to come here first with the plan. So West Orange, for instance, building coverage is 35%. So when we originally went in front of West Orange, I think our building coverage was higher than 25%. It was conforming with West Orange, but it was higher. And after we decided we had to come to Montclair and talking to neighbors, we pulled the house line much closer to the front of the house to comply with building coverage, even though we were mistaken about building coverage because we didn't count the terrace. We shrunk the house a lot to, for this application. If we get approval from you, we go in front of West Orange with the same plan that you approved. I just didn't, when I used my template to do the Montclair plan and make all these changes that I have in front of you, I didn't change the date.
This is not relevant to you. For some reason, I'm having problems with, you're not the only one who has failed to do that, and I don't understand. I used to, you know, plan too routinely, there was a revision date, and that was it, and suddenly people don't do it anymore.
Right.
Causes a lot of problems and confusion when clearly there is a subsequent revision to the last date on the plans.
So the plan you have in front of you is the one we're asking for approval, and this is the first submission, so there's been no revisions. And this is the plan we look to go forward with.
So in my understanding of your testimony, is basically you took what was the original date on the plans you were working on and never changed that, even though the plans changed, is that correct?
I changed everything. In the title block, it now says, "Site Plan for Ten Mountain Avenue, Block 1, 103, Township of Montclair," where for the West Orange one, it was a different block and lot.
No, I understand that, but the March 1 date that's in the title, that basically, when you were making the other changes to be for Montclair and whatever, you didn't change the date, which you would probably put on whatever your first plans were.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Okay, well, we're going to take a break to try and be back at 5 after 10, and be ready with your next witness then.
So, Mr. Allen, could you again describe for the board the plans you prepared for what is being proposed as part of this application for getting anything that's going on with West Orange?
Right. So, the existing building on the property has a footprint of approximately 1,150 square feet. The building that we are proposing to erect has a bigger footprint. And I had that. Where's my zoning table? I don't know where it is. Because this was discussed earlier. The footprint of the building is approximately 1,595 square feet. So, that's the plan increase is something on the order of 40 percent. The building is two stories in height plus a basement. The topography of the site dictates that we terrace the property and that we find ways to mediate between the backyard and the building itself. The facade that you're looking at there, the front facade, it was designed to reduce the apparent height. It has a mansard roof. And it's, right now, the building that's there is very flat and without much architectural expression at all. We tried to create something that would be of character, but also that would fit within the scale of what you see as you drive down Mountain Avenue. And I am confident that it does. So, I'd like to talk about the back because I think that that's perhaps more controversial. And we can turn that over. And I'll, I think, I don't have any large back. What I'd like to do is I'd like to put up a side element because that shows some of what's happening here in terms of the massing and how we're trying to deal with the topographic issues on this property. So, the front of the house is going to have a stone-faced facade. The top will be, as I said, a mansard roof. That's enclosing the second floor. The back of the house will have a stucco-faced facade. And there are porches that extend off of that. Lowest level that you see there, lowest level you see on this, on the rear perspective view, is the basement. So, that opens out onto a porch, and then there are stairs down to a terrace, which we placed halfway between the basement level and the upper level of the lawn in the back. And the point of that, or the idea of this, was so that we wouldn't have, right now, there is a stair, I don't know if it's been demolished, there's a stair in the backyard that's pretty daunting to navigate, going from the existing house down to the lower part of the yard. And so, what we tried to do was to make it such that there would be no sets of steps where there'd be more than, you know, six risers, something like that. We didn't want somebody to feel like they had to climb Mount Everest to get from the backyard into the house again. Trying to make the backyard useful. And this is probably my wife asking me why I'm not home. Yes, it is. Call the doctor. So, much of this, of the house design, had to do with addressing the topography and addressing how do we, how do we make it so that people can use this property in a way that's reasonable? Because right now, it isn't reasonable. The height of the building, well, let me talk about the organization inside of the building. So, on the ground floor, there are a garage. So, one of the things that we needed to do is that, right now, there's just a driveway. So, it's totally not compliant with your parking requirements. And it's not compliant with the needs of Mr. Rosario either. Mr. Rosario needs a place to put his car. So, we've created a large garage, but it's not big enough, really, for two cars. It would have, it would need to be about four feet, five feet wider to comfortably accommodate two cars in width. I did not want to make the front facade of this building dominated by garage doors. And in terms of the internal organization of the house, there's program, there are things that Mr. Rosario needs that would have been squeezed out. It would be a substantial change to the internal layout of the house. So, the ground floor, you come in, there's a foyer. To the left, there's a large opening into a study. And then you go down some steps because, again, even inside the house, we have to deal with this topographic change outside. We have to push those lower floors down so that they're not too far above the grade that you, that you reach when you get to the backyard. We had to push them downwards. So, you come into the foyer, then you go down a few steps into the living room, kitchen, dining area. In the foyer, there are stairs that go up to the second floor. So, this is second floor with three bedrooms. There are two secondary bedrooms and one master bedroom suite. They're not overly large, but they're, they're fine. They're, they're good bedrooms. There are off master bedroom, actually, off of both of those bedrooms, there are little porches that you can go out onto and look out. I didn't mention, on the ground floor, there is also a deck off of the living room that you can go out on. It doesn't connect to the backyard. It's just a place to go outside from the living room. In the basement, the part that is towards the front, towards Mountain Avenue, is deep into the ground. We put mechanical and storage area there. And the part that's towards the rear, the recreation room, that does open out onto a porch that leads into the terrace that I talked about before. Again, we tried to, we tried to make a house that was with massing, that was not overbearing, that was exuberant in some ways, but respectful in other ways. And I think that we succeeded in that.
With regards to the addition that's being put on in terms of meeting certain bulk requirements, can you explain with regards to the front yard setback, what the requirements are and what is being proposed?
Right. So, for the front yard setback, one of the issues is that the adjoining property to the north actually doesn't front on Mountain Avenue. And so, it's set back substantially from Mountain Avenue. Rather than it being, all the other houses going southward are about 25 feet going into West Orange, about 25 feet back from the front yard. The, but the one, as I said, to the north is about 50 feet. So, that really skews, your ordinance requires a minimum of 25 feet, or if the average of the properties to the, to the north and south are more, then, then we have to comply with that. Well, because of that, of the ones to the north of us, we have a tougher go. The existing house is set back, excuse me, 27.9 feet. That's the existing house. And we are proposing a slight decrease in that. The decrease is due to the front entry. So, I want to put that back up. So, the, this is, this surface right here, that's the front of the existing house. And we wanted to create some modulation, some architectural character. So, we depressed the entrance, and we just created a small overhang here. It only sticks out about a foot, but it's enough to create some protection over the front entrance. And it's, and it provides, I think, some visual interest in the front. Second thing I would also point out is that the mansard roof is set back so that the upper part of the house is compliant with, actually, this one. Well, it's not compliant with the average, but it is certainly less than what we have right now. So, that's for the front yard.
Okay. And with regards to the width of the building, regarding the existing building and the addition?
I'm going to show, I'm going to put up a different drawing then. I'm going to put up the ground floor plan. Yeah, the second floor might be better. So, if you look at the second floor plan, this is the outline of the existing house. And what we did is we set the second floor to the, to satisfy the side yard requirements. So, these are within the side yard setbacks, these two. The existing house encroaches on the required side yards. So, the existing building exceeds the permitted width, and we do too, but by less than the existing building.
And you've already addressed the parking issue. That is also nonperforming currently, but it's actually being improved by the addition of the garage.
Significantly.
Okay. You're providing one space where none are presently.
Let me talk a little bit further about that, too. There is, in Mountain Avenue, there is a divider, right as you come into Montclair. There's an island, the Miller Road. And the current driveway, please see. Could you use the engineer's site drawing for a second? So, right now, this is Mountain Avenue. At the north end of the property is where the driveway is. And. Is that on? Okay. So, right now, the driveway's at the north end of the property. Because of that, that center divider in Mountain Avenue, it's really inconvenient to turn into the driveway. So, one of the decisions we made was to move the driveway to the south end. We are also, the house, the existing house is a split-level house. So, below this area where the garage is going to be is actually, inside the house, the finished floor is, is actually about four feet deeper than what we intend to do. We're going to fill where the garage is going to be because there's a fairly good slope from Mountain Avenue to the garage. So, we're trying to get the garage as close as we can to a reason, you know, well, actually, we are getting it to a reasonable slope from Mountain Avenue to the garage. And we are, so, it's actually a much, much better situation right now. Instead of a steeply sloping driveway that empties onto Mountain Avenue where there's this dividing island, it's now on the other side of the property where there's more room to maneuver in and out of the street. The grade is better, and we are putting a garage inside of the building. So, some of what you see in the increase in the building is also footprint for our garage.
And can you also talk about, there were some questions to the engineer regarding how many stories the building is with the proposed addition?
So, the building is, is two stories, not two and a half, two stories above grade. The basement does not count as a story above grade by your, by the definition in your zoning ordinance.
And can you explain to the board why, how that meets, or doesn't meet, the definition of the story under the ordinance?
Right. So, the Montclair ordinance. This is, I copied some sections of your ordinance. And this one is from the definition of a basement. The basement is that portion of a building that is partly or completely below grade. A basement shall be considered as a story above grade where the finished surface of the floor above the basement is more than six feet above grade. And we are less than six feet, by a fair amount. We're like four, four and a half feet, four feet, eight inches. Okay. So, we are within the definition of a story below grade. So, we only have two stories.
And also now, with regards to, there was a comment with regards to maximum building coverage. And we had, in the submission, we had it calculated at 25 percent, which is basically the limit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you comment on the planner's comment in his report regarding the terrace and the inclusion of the terrace?
Right. So, the definition of building coverage is the ratio of the horizontal area measured from the exterior surface of the exterior walls of the principal building on a lot plus horizontal areas covered by decks and staircases to the total lot area. So, we included all of those things. We did not consider the terrace to be a deck. And I don't consider it to be a deck. The purpose of that terrace is to provide a way to get from the backyard up to the level of the house. If it were a patio on a flat lot, you wouldn't be considering it building coverage. And we don't have a flat lot. So, we are trying to mediate between a very steeply sloping backyard and the interior of the house. And I'd be happy to discuss that because I understand that there's maybe a difference of opinion about it, but I read your definition, and I think that we've satisfied it.
And can you also discuss, to the extent you can, any improvements with regards to landscaping in the project? Well, I do have these plans, so should I, what should I do with them?
I guess if you're going to testify to them, you should mark them.
Okay.
And then we'll see whether we need to have those submitted for further review by the board professionals. You're up to A3.
A3? Okay. Well, should I mark each of them or?
You just hand them up, and we'll, we'll take care of that. Just identify for the record. A3 is a landscape plan prepared by your office. Is there a date on it?
Yes. If I could read it.
You have younger eyes over here. Maybe that'll help.
Oh, yeah, it's really, the tape is kind of gone. Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see it. Do you want me to put a date on it?
Well, why don't we, why don't we just mark it with today's date?
I think that's reasonable.
No revision date.
Okay. This is 65. Okay. in the backyard when we eliminated the pool. And we made some changes in the backyard when we brought the house further up the hill. So, there's a larger backyard than there was before. We are planting a lot of shrubbery and a couple of ornamental trees, three ornamental trees on the property. There's a, there's a Japanese maple that goes in the far rear. There's a dogwood that goes in the front. And there's a, which one is this? Well, I could say it in Latin, but I forget what, what this one is. The back is primarily lawn. There is a, as was discussed previously, a three-riser kind of curly step just to help us drop lower as we go to the back.
What about, Mr. Rosario testified, large to certain plantings that are going on the retaining walls in the area of the forefoot?
Right. Right. There are shrubs that are surrounding the retaining walls, so they would all be screened. There is a stair, a stone staircase, that we're planning on installing between the front and the back on the north side, and that'll be surrounded by shrubs as well. There is, in the front, a bluestone sidewalk and front stoop between Mountain Avenue and the, and the front door. There's an asphalt driveway, and I'm not sure if there's anything else that I can tell you at this point.
Okay. And overall, then, based on the improvements that are being proposed, does that improve the aesthetic nature of what is there?
I think vastly. I think vastly.
That's all I have.
Is any portion of the existing building being retained?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the entire envelope is being retained. The wall framing is being retained. The roof structure, not.
Yeah, I think maybe an existing building plan showing what's there now in comparison to what's being proposed would be helpful in understanding that because it looks like a completely different building. Is there a reason why you chose low shrubs in the back of the retaining wall bordering your neighbor?
To a great extent, we wanted to screen the retaining wall.
I'm saying as opposed to taller trees, there's, there's not going to be any privacy for your neighbor who's at a lower elevation than, than this property. They'll be looking straight into the back of this property, which is pretty imposing, I think, from, from there.
Well, yeah, that's, that, this is an answer to your question, but it is a point that, that the plant selection was to be for deer resistancy to a great extent, but that doesn't answer your question about, about heights of trees. I don't, you know, I'd have to talk to Mr. Rosario. This is submitted for your consideration, and there are trees on the adjoining properties. It's not, you know, that this is it. There are some trees that are behind here that, you know, provide screening above that height. But, but some, you know, some taller trees could be added if that's, if that's the desire of the board, I would think.
And I believe, as Mr. Rosario testified, that whatever the Montclair tree ordinance requires in terms of remediation, he'll obviously have to comply with.
And just to piggyback off of Ms. Harris's remarks, so, looking at the application for tree removal and replacement permit that was presented to the township of West Orange, if you look at the last page for administrative purposes only, it says, number of trees approved for removal, eight, which were living and one that was dead. I didn't see anything in here regarding, you know, the majority of them dying due to a fungus, but under that, number of trees replaced, evergreen screening to be installed along east property line. So, these are evergreens. These are taller trees, you know, which I think would make sense, and this is what the township of West Orange recommended. Seems like it would make sense in terms of privacy, in terms of erosion, you know, all the things that it seems like the, your neighbors are concerned about with it affecting their quiet enjoyment.
If I could, I am still subject to West Orange to put those in. According to the granting of that permit, they will be installed. So, I have no objection to doing that.
Well, it was already done. The eight trees were already removed.
No, but the new one's going in.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions, members of the board?
How much room is there between the rear retaining wall and the property line? The way the drawing is shown, it looks like the trunk of, you know, the center of what you're planning is right on the property line, which in turn would mean you'd need to be disturbing the neighbor's property in order to accomplish that. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm looking at the, at the placement of those. They, they need to be pulled in.
Okay. I mean, it, I.
It's four feet. That's the distance between the retaining wall and the property line.
So, it's, is that sufficient area to do all the plantings that you're proposing?
Yeah, I think so. Yes.
Okay. So, how wide would the Alex Nully Stephens normally grow?
Those are typically five-foot diameter, you know, when they're really mature.
The, and how much screening will the snowball viburnum provide?
It will be providing screening at the lower level. It will not be, it will not be tall the way that you, as Ms. Harris asked.
the, why don't we go, why don't we go through the, go one. Trying to file. The Japanese maple that's proposed, how tall will that typically grow?
I guess fully mature, you know, Japanese maples are perhaps. I guess fully mature, you know, Japanese maples are perhaps similar to dogwoods, you know, but maybe 20 feet, 20 feet, something like that. But they're slow growing.
And then you have this area that's marked rocks and, you know, the ground cover junipers. I assume that the junipers are, you're talking about at most a foot high, is that correct?
That's, those are low.
And I'm trying to understand your drawing, again, this is a property line question, but the, so you have the bluish-green area, is that both indicating where the junipers and the rocks are going?
Yes.
Okay, because that, you know, again, is showing-
I see what you're saying.
And then you're showing a planting behind that, and it's not immediately clear from the label what that plant-
I see what you're saying, yes.
Okay.
The- Yeah. So if evergreens are to be planted along this back area, would you not have to reconsider your entire planting scheme here? Because some of these may not grow underneath the evergreens.
The junipers are actually, they're suitable for shade areas.
But you had not taken into consideration that you were going to be doing evergreens?
You know what? The first time I saw this application here is tonight, and I haven't even really seen it. I've just heard what-
You're talking about the-
The tree, the tree removal. So I was not aware that there was an agreement with West Orange to do specific plantings.
Okay. And the type of evergreens that ultimately might be planted would also potentially encroach upon the neighbor's property, because some of them really do extend out quite.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to take a look at the, you know, at the, at this now. I just, I don't have an answer for it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm going to have to look at what plantings would be suitable to satisfy this and to stay within our property.
And I think that's the point, is that this planting scheme probably requires revision.
Certainly in this sense, it does.
And height with privacy, if I may add.
I'm sorry.
That allow height with privacy.
Yeah. Well, I think that that's what this is calling for, so I think that we'll have to, you know, change this back line here.
The, I'm struggling with your calculation of stories and the definition, and so I'm looking at the east elevation. You're drawing A-2-3, and so do you want to explain why what visually looks like three stories is not three stories?
Okay, let me try. So a two-story, well, it's really, it's really stories above grade. That's the operative term. So the Montclair ordinance, now, it's not just, let me say beyond this. The fact of this property is that it slopes extremely from the front to the back. Can't get around it. That's the fact.
Yes, and we have many of those in Montclair.
Yes, you do. But this one's a fairly severe case of it. In any case, the front of the property, you can, you know, whatever you do that's reasonable there, it doesn't hold as you move to the back. And your ordinance says that a bases, a story above grade as something that's not a basement. Rather, a basement is considered a story above grade if it fails to meet certain requirements. The first thing is that you have to calculate the average grade. We don't do that. That's why I have a site engineer who does that. So he determined the average grade, and then we worked from there to determine how do we then stay within your regulation. So your regulation requires us to limit the distance between the, what's considered to be the first story above grade and the average grade to six feet or less, and we are six feet or less.
Okay, and where I'm struggling with that is nowhere in the definition does it speak of average grade. When you're calculating the height of the building, number of feet up, you're looking, you're going 10 feet around and calculating on that basis, but the definition is a basement shall be considered as a story above grade where the finished surface of the floor above the basement is more than six feet above grade. And I've always viewed that as the grade at the lowest level where the, in effect, the floor of the, where the exposure of the basement is above ground, and that you're calculating from that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can try to address your comment, I'm not going to sit here and try and tell the board how to interpret its ordinances. That's your job. I will point out, however, though, that both building height and stories are contained within the same section of the ordinance, and-
But we deliberately, originally when the township did the ordinance with limiting the number of stories, they were treating it at a, say, height variance, and since because of the 10% triggering a D variance for that, we jumped up and down and said, no, you need to separate the two, so the story calculation is done differently and not looked at as a height variance issue. So I, the two are not equivalent, and we're deliberately not intended to not trigger the 10% D variance requirement, saying going from two, you know, two and a half to three is more than 10%, and as much fun as we have here, we didn't want to have what should be C variances become D variance, and, you know, as I indicated, we have these steep-sloped lots, and the same issue comes up, and suddenly having people do D variance proofs to just have a third story due to the slope of the lot.
My comment was only to point out the fact that we based our calculations on how we thought the ordinance was meant to be interpreted. If there's a different interpretation of it, it's not clear from the way your ordinance is.
I think it is clear. I'm looking at, we're talking now, we're talking about the number of, the building height in terms of feet. Am I correct, Mr. Harrison? Is that what we want to talk about?
No. I am accepting your engineer's calculations and vetting the little discrepancy between the West Orange and Montclair plans, that it complies, it is less than 35 feet high.
Okay, okay.
I am not questioning that. I am questioning the number of stories that the building has. And my understanding, and Mr. Pedo, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're looking at where, and we've done a number of these variances, either approving or denying them, at where the basement comes above ground, and then calculating from that ground level as to whether the floor above that is more or less than six feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it would appear, based on these drawings, that the rear of this building is a three-story building. Is that correct?
That's the way it appears, yes.
Okay, and then, Mr. Sullivan, they did not notice for that variance, which-
Well, no, right, so far we've got potential for a building coverage variance, if you count that terrace, and now you've got the additional potential variance for a number of stories, so.
Oh, it's getting to the terrace part.
Yeah, okay, yes.
So, okay, but that, and I would not view that as being subsumed in the generic, any other variances, that that is, particularly as it affects the properties to the rear, a not inconsequential variance.
Yeah, I think if the, this plan that's in front of us is going forward, I think the applicant would have to renotice.
Now, to go on to the terrace, so we know the parameters of the renotice, I, the, I'm trying to, I'm not sure what's the best sheet to look at, but in terms of, it's probably one of the side elevations, as to, you know, can we look, I guess, look at the south elevation? I'm trying to understand what you are and are not including in the calculation of impervious cover for the building.
Building cover.
Building cover.
Okay. Okay. We include that. We include that.
Okay, didn't just stand over, so all the-
We include everything from this point here, which is a deck to the front of the building.
And so going to the right of that, as you're facing the drawing, going to the east, describe what is physically being constructed there?
Well, okay, so it's, there is a retaining wall that will be constructed, that it increases in height towards the rear of the property, and there is a three-foot-high fence, not a four-foot-high fence, on top of it, the guardrail. In the distance on the south elevation, you see beyond this, you see the terrace that we talked about.
Right. And I want to understand about the relationship between that terrace and the ground surface.
You know what, do we have, Sean, does your drawing have those heights on it? You know what, I think it's on, maybe it's on the north, let me just see. Okay, actually, it's on this drawing itself. Okay, so the deck elevation off of the recreation room is at 113, and three feet 11 inches down is where the terrace level is, and then from there it's down to 105, which is the upper level of lawn.
So the terrace is 3.9 feet above the lawn level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and if I were doing this in my backyard and doing a similar thing, and that's probably about the distance where my rear entrance is above grade, I would call that a deck. I don't know, how is this not a deck? I understand the slopes there, but it's still above grade.
Well, you know, we did have a discussion with Mr. Sharun about this, because he recommended that we include it, but it would have too big an impact on the plan to do it, at the point that we were ready to file, and I think that Mr. Rosario is not willing to relinquish that interior space. So we thought about it, and one of the questions I have is at what point does that become something other than a deck? If it's one foot up, is it still a deck? If it's one foot up from the lawn? If it's two feet up from the lawn? If it's more than 50% down from the lowest level to the lawn? Where is that threshold where it becomes objectionable? From a utility, from the point of view of making a place that is generous to the occupants, you want it to be halfway. That's what we did. But if you tell us that in order to satisfy your requirements, it needs to be a lot lower, and we have a bigger stair going down from the back of the house, I guess that we could consider doing that. But we need to know what it needs to be.
I think the, I don't think there's any question, and again, as Mr. Pedo, in case I'm missing something, as to how this is routinely applied by the township, that this is a deck and gets counted as part of the building coverage.
Correct.
Is that correct? I don't want to go into if it's one inch or whatever, but there's no question 3.9 feet is in the deck part of the world, and it's not a patio that's on the ground. The, you know, it is entirely up to Mr. Rosario as to whether he wants to seek the variance or not, or modify the plans to make it, in effect, a patio. That's his choice. Not giving any indication how he'd vote, I would say go for the variance. The worst that happens, it's denied, and you have to do a deck, but that's up to him. I mean, you have to do a patio or drop the whole idea altogether, but, you know, I, I think the logic is we stop at this point because I think, one, we have a significant notice issue as to the number of stories, and I don't want to go far with questioning and whatever, and then we're going to, and when we're missing an issue that we have jurisdiction over that's, you know, I think a key component of the plans, and is highly relevant to the neighbors to the east. I, I think part of that, and other board members, I mean, I think we need a revised landscape plan that, one, shows it's complying with what West Orange is requiring, and two, is consistent with what Montclair requires as part of its tree removal ordinance. And I don't know what the, you know, whether West Orange complies with Montclair or not, I'm, but I think, you know, we need that to proceed. I would be, one of the things we're going to do, because I, you know, ultimately want to make sure that what we approve or what West Orange approves is the same thing, or if there's a difference, you know, since we're going first, if West Orange wants to alter the plans that we approve, that it's clear that they have, and it has to come back here for us to address whatever changes they made. But part of that, in order to do that, we need to reference specific plans with specific dates and revision dates, and so there's no question, we're all talking about the same plans, and we can reference them, and if you're content with living with the site plan with a March 1 date, that's fine, if you're not otherwise changing it from, based on tonight's discussions, but, you know, I think that is important, and certainly in terms of the landscaping plans, I assume what we'll get, we'll have legible dates, so there's no question as to what plans we're referring to on that. Is there any other thoughts board members have as to things that would be helpful to you, that they add to what they've submitted? you, that they add to what they've submitted?
I think it would be helpful, as I said before, to show the existing plans in relation to what's being proposed, and existing site plan versus proposed side by side.
And to somewhat make the neighbors nervous, but merely because we're saying you need a variance does not mean we're going to deny the variance. It is, we're saying you need to apply for the variance, and we will consider it on its merits, and we'll consider their objections on their merits. But I just have this curious idea that the notice has to give everyone fair notice as to what it is, what you're seeking, and that we in our actions need to be clear what we are and are not granting variances for.
And I'd even take a look at the building coverage. It looks like what was existing and what is proposed is, in essence, doubling in size. So just kind of looking at the, you could call it a terrace, right? Looking at that measurement from the bottom to top to just kind of be considerate of the size, right? Because I think that kind of has everyone with a bit of a question mark.
Yeah, and one thing I didn't get to with the architect is, I thought he was giving somewhat different numbers as to square footage of the building than what's on the plans, and I'm not sure, but again, this is the West Orange larger, Montclair smaller. Just be sure that the numbers that are on the architectural plans are the Montclair correct numbers that you're seeking with the smaller building size.
With regards to that, I believe what happened was that he gave you square footage for the existing building, and then he spoke about footprint, not necessarily square footage.
Oh, but I, you know, maybe foolishly assuming that the first floor at least, and sellers, since they have the same square footage, would be consistent with what the footprint is.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Does anything, any, before I send people home to bed or watching TV or whatever you want to do, does anyone have anything further you wish to say? Mr. Tremblak? Okay, okay, one at a time, one at a time.
I would just like to request that the applicant also provide, we'd like to see revised engineering drawings that show how the average grade was calculated. As you can see, we have Mr. Petrie, who's working with us and prepared to testify, who calculates the average grade differently. And I think if they have the information to show their calculations, it would be helpful to us and the board. Secondly, I'd like to also request that the applicant provide before the next meeting the steep slope information that was not, you know, that's required, but it was not provided, including the contours 50 feet from the property lines. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have a drainage report. I realize that's going to be reviewed and approved by the board engineer, but we'd like to see that also. And if there's anything else that was, I don't remember, that was mentioned as perhaps not submitted as required by steep slope, we would like to see that before the next meeting.
Permeability tests, the data that supports the conclusions that the engineer offered in his testimony.
I'm sorry, Alan, what was it?
I just added the permeability tests and any other data that supports the-
You want a copy of it?
Yeah. The board would as well. Okay. Mr. Jones?
Judges, when I hand out to the board, I have pictures of what all of the views are from my house now, could I do it now, or do we do it, have a package I can give out to you first, or should we wait?
I think it would be better if you wait and let's see, I think from your point of view, it would be better to do in the context, once you've seen their revised landscape plan, as to whether that does or not, not, you're right, what the view will be from your house.
I will hold on to it, okay?
And anyone else with?
Hi, Rachel Grahowski, 13 Briar Hill Road, also licensed architect. I just would like to ask that the architect discuss the materials at the back of the building and along the spine or the ridge for the board and for the neighbors.
At the back of the property, the base of the, the base of the building will be stone similar to the front. The- Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The base of the building will be stone, as in the front. There is white trim that is dividing each floor, and it corresponds to the height also of the decks that project out from the rear. The wall surfaces for the basement level and the first floor are stucco. And above that is a wood frame structure that is intended to be painted white. The tall vertical element is going to be glass, looking out to the rear.
Just on the package that was submitted, it says calwall for the vertical piece as well as across the top of the roof.
That's for the top.
It actually says on the elevation that that's calwall.
All right, let me take a look at that.
It says on A 2.3, calwall translucent panels within Luna frames.
Absolutely wrong. That's absolutely wrong. That's supposed to be glass.
But you are using calwall on the roof.
On the roof.
So calwall, did you have you used that on residential properties before?
No.
Right, so I just want to make the suggestion that, you know, the board informed themselves about what calwall looks like because it's commercial material, often used on car dealerships or hospitals or gyms. And it's, you know, having that massive structure just above your house with this material is not really very residentially.
Okay, your job is to inform us. Our job is to sit here and learn from you, the applicant, and anyone else who wants to give us information. We're not research entities.
Well, I'm happy to pass around what it's like.
And you all have a full opportunity to do that.
But it wasn't really a question, but I would like to answer the question that I have in my mind, which is that it's on the roof. The calwall will be on the roof.
Okay, we're, okay.
I would like to ask.
Okay, Alan, I assume that's-
Can I ask you to ask it?
All right. You want to do it next, you want to look at the date?
I'm assuming we're looking at July 17th, because we've got enough time to do notice for the next meeting.
Our next meeting is June 19th, so there's not sufficient time to notice. So it's July 17th, be the next meeting.
Does that work for, okay, on both sides, does that work for everybody?
It works for me. I need to just check with all the witnesses. I'll let you know.
And Alan, if I say it would be highly advisable, you go ahead with the Rotundo application on the 19th.
All right, it looks like all of my witnesses, as of now, have that date open.
Okay, so the hearing on this matter is being continued until July 17th. There will be further notice, and that presumes the notice will be done correctly and on time. But you should plan to be here on July 17th, and we will see everyone here then. And board members, Mr. Church was obeyed directions and submitted comments on the demolition.
As did Ms. Harris and Mr. Simon.
Okay, so that side of the room was good children. They did A's for the night. If those who did not, if you could do it, we'll discuss it next time, because I really don't want to discuss it at this point, unless everyone wants to sit here. But we do need to sit that. The council would like to move forward with the ordinance the following week, and the planning board and the historic preservation commission will be looking at it between now and then. So we'll be able to get all of the comments to the council and do that, so.
Yeah, if you'd, if board members, if you could send your comments to me like the other members have, I can conflate them into one document that we can review at the meeting on the 19th, so that we have something to work from.
So, and otherwise, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Satisfied.